All right, ladies and gentlemen, if we come to order, I'll start this mission made in May 4. Make sure your cell phone turned down, turned off. We don't want any cell phones going out there. I'm gonna turn it over to Chairman Tannen.
Thank you Deputy Wilson. Good evening everybody, and thank y'all for all being here. If you would, please stand. Before we get started, we usually have an invocation and then the pledge. So tonight I've asked Commissioner Rowland if he would give the invocation. I think you've got a quick announcement before that. Then we'll have the invocation and the pledge, and then you can start with a beat. So Commissioner Rowland?
Yeah, just wanted to remind everyone that Thursday at noon is National Day of Prayer, and we will be meeting on the courthouse steps to commemorate that. So I just wanted all our citizens to know, and hopefully you'll be able to attend. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for today. We thank you for this rain. We need it. We know that you know the things that we need, and you give them to us. Lord, we're just thankful for the opportunity to come today with a group of people to make decisions for our county and for the people that live here. And I just ask you to bless this, bless our leaders and the people that speak, and take us home safe for tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. I'm in.
Amen. Let's pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Adams, you can give us a roll call, please.
Mr. Amheron?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Chairman Tapley?
I'm here.
Mr. Rowland?
Here.
Commissioner Omami is not present.
Okay, let the record show that we do have a forum, and I'm gonna call the seat of the Monroe County Court Commissioners' Board. Before we get into new business, we've got a few items to tend to first. The first item on the agenda is going to be the proclamation for our Monroe County bicentennial. And so for y'all of y'all that don't know, Monroe County is 200 years old this year, and we're excited about that and celebrate it. We've been working towards that. We've got a couple of folks here tonight that have been involved in all the committee to promote this event. We have actually pushed some of it back. We're gonna have, go ahead and push some of it back to the end, to the middle end of the year for COVID, so that we can actually celebrate together. But what we want to do tonight is because May 15th is the actual date, and this is the meeting closest to without being past it, we're going to, I want to read proclamation tonight about our bicentennial. So if you will, bear with me. This is a proclamation commemorating the 200th birthday of Monroe County. Whereas Monroe County celebrates its bicentennial in the year of 2021, it is fitting to recognize Monroe County on the occasion of this special milestone and to applaud its distinguished history. And whereas Monroe County was officially created on May 15th, 1821, from a Creek Indian concession at Indian Springs, is named for the fifth U.S. President, James Monroe, has a total area of 397 square miles, contains the incorporated cities of Collodin and Forsyth, the county seat, and is located in central Georgia between Atlanta and Macon. Whereas in the 19th century, Monroe County was a prosperous farming community that contained Georgia's first railroad. It later became an important Civil War hospital base in the wake of General Sherman's, William Sherman's March to the Sea in 1864. And whereas Monroe County grew in the 20th century from being primarily a farming community to being a leading producer of textiles with factories such as Trio Manufacturing Company and Ensign Cotton Mills, as well as the home of an esteemed liberal arts women's college, Bessie Tipp College. And whereas Monroe County today is comprised of nearly 28,000 residents, a top 10 school system in Georgia, and is known statewide as the public safety capital of Georgia due to the presence of the Georgia Public Safety Training Center, which opened in 1986, and the Georgia Department of Corrections and State Offices South, which opened in 2010. And whereas Monroe County will proudly mark its 200th birthday with celebrations throughout its bicentennial year, culminating with a two-day street festival beginning on September 25th, 2021, that will serve as the county's 200th birthday party and include a proclamation ceremony, the burial of a new time capsule, musical entertainment with artisan crafts, guest speakers, and excellent food. And whereas in recognition of Monroe County's rich history, it is indeed an honor to pay tribute to Monroe County upon the occasion of its bicentennial. Now therefore be it resolved that congratulations are sent to Monroe County and its residents on its bicentennial as it celebrates this joyous occasion, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be transmitted to the Monroe County Bicentennial Commission. Now therefore I, Gray Tapley, Chairman of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, hereby proclaim May 15th, 2021, as Monroe County's 200th birthday and call this observance to attention of our citizens. So proclaim this fourth day of May 2021. All right, let that be entered into the record, please. At this time, before we move on, I do have a few comments that Richard Dunus would like to make. Richard is our Public Information Officer. For many of you that are connected to our Facebook page, Richard is the one that puts tirelessly puts out great amounts of information and does it very well. We appreciate the work he does. But Richard, if you would, make the statements that you wanted to make about the bicentennial.
Um, spread information for the Commissioners, but as well as the public note. The Chairman of our committee, Ralph Bass, is in attendance here tonight as well. The two of us approached the City Council last night, Forsyth City Council, about mashing the donation the Commissioners made to the bicentennial festival of $5,000, and they were willing to do it. So I just want to give a public thank you from the Commission, as well as on behalf of the county, Forsyth, for doing that for us.
Very good. I appreciate that. And appreciation to the City Council, the Mayor, Forsyth, for doing so. Appreciate that. Ralph Bass is here. He's our Chairman of the Bicentennial Committee. And Ralph, I don't want to put you on the spot. If you had any other information you can share or share, otherwise, come on up if you want to. Yes, sir.
Briefly, let me say that we appreciate that from the perspective of the Commission, the confidence that the Commissioners have expressed in us, the support that they have provided, and we are looking forward to a glorious celebration in September.
Very good. Thank you, Ralph. Thank you, Ann Richard, and the whole committee, for all the work that you've done. Very good. Next order of business is the resolution for the I-75 Central Corridor Coalition. This whole packet, of course, is not it. It's just the resolution. Have all of y'all had a chance to read the resolution? Any questions about it?
I'd just like to vote against it. I had a vote, but I don't. I don't agree with the Attorney of County. That's what it's gonna do. It's gonna, it's gonna hurt our county. They could have started a horrible waystation.
Just so we're clear, John, I'm glad you brought that concern up, because the concern, you're talking about the commercial vehicle lanes.
Correct.
That's an absolutely valid concern. That has nothing to do with this group here. We, this, this group has allowed me some opportunities to speak against it and to do exactly what you said. DOT has not listened. This doesn't, I would-
But I had to make my-
Oh, sure. You know, we definitely all, I think, share in your opinion that those commercial vehicle lanes just all have started north of the waystation. Absolutely agree. Just want to make sure that we don't tie this group, the I-75 Central Corridor Coalition, in with DOT's project for the commercial vehicle lanes. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Very good. All right, so just I'll read the resolution and I'll entertain a motion to approve. Resolution of Monroe County regarding membership and support of the I-75 Central Corridor Coalition, Inc. Whereas intergovernmental collaboration across jurisdictional planning are important to a successful community and state. And whereas between 2015 and 2017, the Georgia Municipal Association provided technical assistance to member governments along the I-75 Corridor between Macon and Atlanta. It determined that there was a shared interest in formalizing support, multi-regional planning. And whereas after a thorough study, the I-75 Central Corridor Coalition, Inc. was established in January of 2018 and achieved status from the Internal Revenue Service as exempt under Section 501(c)(6) Regulations. And whereas the mission of the I-75 Central Corridor Coalition is to advocate for robust transportation infrastructure, economic vitality, and smart growth along the I-75 Corridor from Stockbridge to Macon. Whereas Monroe County has been an active, active member in the multi-jurisdictional I-75 Central Corridor Coalition since January 2018 and shares the vision of efficient and effective smart growth development along the I-75 Corridor. Whereas Monroe County supports the consensus of the I-75 Central Corridor Coalition, the regional smart transportation growth plan along the I-75 Corridor will provide direction for efficient investment and planning efforts aimed at promoting smart growth initiatives and benefiting Monroe County and other jurisdictions in the I-75 Central Corridor Coalition. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that Monroe County supports the mission and purpose of the I-75 Central Corridor Coalition by its dues paid membership in the organization. Be it further resolved that Monroe County designates the Chairman or their designee as the official representative of the county on the Board of Directors. And be it further resolved that Monroe County encourages other local government, the state of Georgia, and the federal government to support multi-regional smart growth planning through technical and financial support. Signed and sealed this fourth day of May 2021. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the, got a motion to approve by Commissioner Amheron. Thank you very much. Got a second from Commissioner Davis. Need to discussion, sorry. Here, no discussion. I'll call the question. All in favor? All right, the resolution is passed. George has also voted in the affirmative. And so that we're clear, Commissioner Omami is on the phone. I was just notified of that myself. So, very good. Next item on the agenda is the speaker appearance. So I've got Wes Huff and Tom Green, and they are represented by Attorney Fox. Is that right?
It is. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Are you gonna be the only ones to speak? And I want to give a quick synopsis before either group gets started. Fair enough? So at this time, we had a request, we had a request from some residents down in the south end of the county that have some complaints against another property owner, and they wanted to come and speak to us about it. While we are going to be having some planning and zoning hearings tonight, this, this portion of the meeting is not a planning and zoning hearing. We have noticed none of, we have not noticed, meaning we haven't notified the community that there was going to be a hearing. All we're doing is allowing each side to speak, the ones that wanted to bring the issue up, the side that wanted to bring the issue up. And then we, of course, had to give the other side, the other property owner, an opportunity to do so well. And so at this time, what we're gonna do is listen. And I think we've got an idea about what we might do moving forward after each side has made their presentation. So at this time, I'll turn the floor over to you, Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, my name is John Fox. I'm an attorney with the law firm Adams, Hemingway, Wilson &amp; Rutledge. And I'm here on behalf of the River Mist Homeowners Associations, both the upper and lower, and I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Tom Green and Mr. Wes Huff. We are here to speak with you seeking the protections of the planning and zoning regulations that are enforced by this commission. The reason being is that the owner of an adjacent property is using that property in a manner to generate a commercial profit through what we contend is an unapproved use. It is a question of safety. It is a question of appropriate use, and it is a question of compliance. And gentlemen, I have handed to each of you a packet with three tabs and have done so for orientation purposes. The first tab contains the Q public card, which shows that this property, 32 acres, which is at the south end of the River Trace Drive, is owned by an LLC known as Indian Shoals LLC out of Macon, Georgia. And this tract is zoned agricultural, which means the intent of that district will be that the property is primarily used for the cultivation of crops, dairy, or the raising of livestock, or a vacant property is owned for such purpose, and that district also allows rural residential and select commercial uses. Now gentlemen, the previous owner of this property, South River Mist LLC, struck an agreement with the homeowners associations. And that agreement, which was recorded, calls for that property to be brought under the covenants of those homeowners associations and gave the owner of the tract the ability to use the River Trace Drive, which is a privately owned road owned solely by the members of that homeowners association. Now, the issues relating to that declaration and alleged violations of those covenants to that use are not before the Board. All right, those are an issue that will go before the Monroe County Superior Court. The only issue we're here for are concerning zoning. But I raise this agreement because incidental with that agreement is access to this private road. And that's important because there is no other access. In order to get to this property, one has to turn off of 23, travel down through Kingswood Drive, through the entirety of the River Trace HOA. I'm sorry, River Mist. I appreciate that. Cross over the railroad, and this railroad crossing can only be used according to the written crossing agreement dated 1989. And that gave the members of the HOA a private crossing way over, one for residential use only, not commercial use. And then once over the railway, we have to travel down that private drive. Also, the previous owner, for context, put this entire tract into a conservation easement, carving out only two half-acre portions, neither of which are where the yurt or other structure on this property sit. Indian Shoals acquired this property November of 2019. It was zoned agricultural. Since that time, there have been no variances, no conditional uses that have been applied for or approved. The owner has set up a private, as opposed to a public campsite, which is rented by people from Airbnb for transient overnight stays or short-term rentals. It is, as shown in Tab 2, gentlemen, publicly advertised for the entire world. Anybody who wants to rent this can. And as you'll see from Tab 3, various reviews, it has drawn people from Georgia all the way out to California. And that's not an exaggeration. You'll see in there, there's some actor by the name of Gerard Butler who had stayed there. So this is not something which is limited to family, something limited to friends, but it's a commercial rental operation. And in fact, the rentals of this are not even handled through the owner of the LLC themselves. It is handled through a third company, TNT Airbnb, is out of Macon, which manages six properties, five in Bibb County, and then this located in Monroe County. Now, the HOA first became aware of this, first came to a head when they noticed a sign was out advertising a yoga class on the property. It was to be conducted in late 2019. And then the cars for that class lined the drive, not only the road, but then the adjacent property owners' driveways. And since that time, we've had a structure constructed looking out over the river, and there's a large yurt or a large tent that's shown in Exhibit 2, which has been erected and then is rented. Traffic has significantly increased through both of the HOAs and across the railroad tracks. The adjacent homeowners are often approached by renters, asking questions about how to access or how to use the property. Owners in the lower HOA have actually been approached by campers who wander off-site trying to obtain firewood and other supplies. They have met, the HOAs have met, and they are in agreement that this use is untenable. A review of the planning and zoning regs, I submit, demonstrates that the rental operation, this commercial rental operation that's being conducted on this property is not a permissive agricultural use as outlined by Regulation 71.3. For example, it's not an agricultural forestry, livestock, or poultry production operation. It's not an agriculturally oriented business. It's not a church. It's not a mobile home. It's not a daycare. It doesn't operate a garage or yard sale. It's not an industrialized building qualifying as a dwelling. It's not a plant nursery. It's not poultry production. Now, there is a permitted use for dwellings. A single-family dwelling in an agricultural plot, a two-family dwelling, a caretaker dwelling, and accessory outbuildings. But if we look, we look to the definition of a dwelling, for the PMZ regulations, it provides that a dwelling is any permanently sited building or portion thereof used or designed for residential purposes. Gentlemen, a yurt, a large tent is not a permanently listed building, permanently sited building. That's not what is contemplated by these. It is a temporary structure that's been erected to rent to overnight guests through a commercial website managed by a third party, and that's the bottom line. Now, any outside, there are outside uses other than permitted uses that are allowed, but those must be approved by application. And that's essential because it allows this commission to be able to go through the process to review those uses, list of the concerns on both sides, and to make a decision as to whether it fits into the overall planning and zoning ordinances. Had that occurred, the commission could have considered whether the use of this property as a site to rent to individuals is appropriate being adjacent to residential neighborhoods, when one, that property can only be accessed through those neighborhood streets, across a private easement, and then through a private driveway. It would have been able to consider that these owners' children all live on and play on these streets, and visitors without that knowledge pose a hazard. As do visitors that aren't vetted, because Airbnb verifies that you have an address, that you have an email address, and you have a valid credit card. It doesn't verify whether you're on probation. It doesn't verify whether you're on parole or any other number of registries. And that is something that concerns the residents of this HOA. This railroad line has to be crossed to access this property. It's a rail line that has literally dozens of trains crossing daily, day and night. It does not have an arm. It is hard, not really visible to those who are not familiar with it. So this presents an enormous liability, and frankly, it's not one that is covered under the insurance policy required by the railroad green, because it wasn't a use, a commercial use wasn't contemplated by the railroad. And finally, the landowners around this tract have no desire for any use adjacent to them, other than what they purchased their properties for, that are residential purposes and for privacy, both of which have been impacted by the existing and ongoing use of this property. So these owners, the citizens of Monroe County and your constituents, turn to you tonight seeking protection as offered under the PMZ regulations enforced by this mission. Because right now, they're at the mercy of a Bibb County resident who is allowing strangers hailing from all over Georgia and all the way out to California to come into Monroe County across private residential properties, across a private residential railroad right-of-way to conduct commercial activity on a piece of property that is zoned agricultural for purposes that is not permissive, and there's been no other use that's been allowed. So gentlemen, we ask this board to review this matter. We ask you to take the appropriate action, and we ask you to bring this use to an end. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fox, and I appreciate your presentation. You've got, you've got two gentlemen that you're representing, and they have the right to speak in the essence of time. Do you think he's made a good case?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, you did have.
I think he did. All right.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm gonna call Mr. Boone Smith. Mr. Smith, Attorney Smith, come on up. Mr. Fox took nine minutes and 50 seconds. You're welcome for that much time.
Thank you, sir, and thank y'all for letting me be here this evening. My name is Boone Smith, and I'm the attorney for John and Rachel Lewis, who are the owners of Indian Shoals LLC, the property that Mr. Fox just discussed. At first, I'd like to address some of his comments and characterizations with regards to, with regards to some of the agreements related to the property, the history of the property, and how that was been handled with the parties themselves. Mr. Fox is correct that it was Mr. Stuart Vernon who entered into the agreement with regards to the crossing arrangement and with regards to the entry into the homeowners association. One place that we differ, and I know this is for Superior Courts, Mr. Fox referenced, that agreement contemplated interest into the homeowners association solely for the purpose of access. It did not provide for any entrance to the homeowners association. It provided for an avenue in accordance with the railroad crossing agreement, an area provided for the railroad crossing agreement where the homeowners of that property, of those 32 acres, could be parties to the private crossing, as well as could participate in the insurance of the private crossing. The Lewis's have owned the property since the end of 2019 and have paid their share of the property insurance as requested by the homeowners association. And at light, the commercial issue as it relates to the insurance was, this was the first time it has been a request to the Lewis's in any venue. As far as with regards to the Airbnb situation that he referenced, he is correct. There is a temporary tent, he references a yurt with a tent, that is on the property, is one single tent that is available for rental. He did make some assessments that any person in the world can just, you know, push a button and have access to that property, and that is not true. Through the protocol of Airbnb, the renter is able to send a request for access to the property, and the property owner is available to review who that person is, I mean, what's gonna be. They do not have the ability to do background checks in the lock key, it's correct, but it allows them to do due diligence, whether it be through social media themselves or through any other avenue in order to accept or reject that renter. And that is provided through the terms of the Airbnb, but also through the Airbnb. The land owner through, he referenced that there was a management company that handled the rental of the property. John and Rachel Lewis are a part of the management company that deals with the handling of these rentals, and they deal with them directly. So that is, it is done through a group. It's more, more you have Airbnb details, but is a person that handles multiple Airbnbs, has guidance for how to administer them, how to handle them, apply and provide rules in the context of the Airbnb. With regards Airbnb itself, it also allows restrictions in which you're able to place on the property that are contingencies of such a rental agreement, whether it be a number of people, use of activity, those sorts of things that is available and that is implemented through that service as well as payment. With regards to the property being held in a conservation easement, that is, that is true, that there are permissive uses in that conservation easement, once again, not subject to a resuming issue, but that allow for leasing, whether it be for personal use, whether it be for hunting leases, or anything of that manner is allowable and is comparable to the situations with regards to the temporary rental as provided by the Airbnb. And so that is some of the, that was, that was both that I just wanted to mention. With regards to the property itself, as noted, it's a 32-acre tract. With regards to this tent, it is way far off the road. In fact, when we've had inquiry of if it's visible from the road, or if anything on the property is visible from the road, it is not. I believe there has been a request by the neighbors for acquaintance, I need to go down to review that. And that, and that was my understanding that as far as this is a far setback property. The other comment he made was that it's a structure constructed. There is a pavilion down by the water. That was actually constructed prior to the ownership of my client. And then it's just an outdoor sitting area and little kitchenette. And so that is what is available at that location. With regards to the Airbnb and the temporary rental usage, is our supposition that under the agricultural section of the zoning code that is not a covered use, meaning it's not addressed as a permitted use or a conditional use that is not a restricted use as it were. It is effectively the family of the Lewis's, a lot of recreational purposes, which they do. They're allowed to utilize it for their entertainment enjoyment on that property. And as far as assertion that as far as allowing a person's temporarily rented location is not included in the context of the zoning ordinance. As far as, as far as any other allegations related to other uses of the property, one thing is, and I don't know of the parking with regards to the yoga event at commencement of, I believe, end of 19. Ms. Lewis's college roommate did have some folks from her yoga class who phoned to the, to the property. She actually invited them and participated in the yoga demonstration or class, or whatever you might call it. So she was there using it for her personal use and her personal enjoyment, and there were other individuals there, so I didn't want to just address those. At present, there's, I know there was noted in planning and zoning that there's discussion of tubing events, or some, and also weddings. That is not- That is not something that has been explored, looked into, as reports to these owners. There were some different folks that were thought of purchasing the property that based upon having the homeowners raise concerns and issues, decided to pass and terminate their contract with the prior owner. That was more aligned with what they were looking into. So the Lewis's do understand if they would like to have conditional use permits of having special events, that's something that they can supply for, and they just want to be good neighbors in this community, as well as following the restrictions that the commission provides to it.
Two more minutes, if you or your clients have the will to speak. This is for everybody tonight, if you do come up and speak, state your name and your address in the, in the privacy.
My name's John Lewis, I live in Macon, Georgia, 4135 Canyon Road. I'm also the property owner of what we're discussing now. I wanted Boone to kind of explain the crossing agreement and all the legal terms that anything came up, because I think he's more qualified myself to do that, but I just wanted to say that the primary use of this land is recreation, the overwhelming majority of it is. This tent was set up for my niece's birthday. We had a couple of people that were interested and listed it on the site as a calendar mechanism. It is a popular thing now, because your county is beautiful, and everybody should be able to enjoy that. From the very beginning, we were in contact with planning and zoning. They gave us the okay. We have lots of communication with them to support that. We also have our own commercial insurance policy for the railroad crossing. We covered RPs extra, so we feel like we're crossing, crossing the Ts, dotting the Is and everything we need to do, but it's ancillary to the primary purpose of the recreational use. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. The two attorneys, Mr. Smith and Mr. Fox, I think we're going to talk with Ben. Ben, you've got some suggestions on how we move forward.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that the homeowners' association send a county or be a written complaint of what they believe is being violated under our zoning ordinances. Would allow, Chair, Mr. Smith, give him the opportunity to respond. I can work with Ms. Porter, and review our zoning ordinances, then provide recommendations to the commission.
Mr. Smith, Mr. Fox, since you're representing your clients, y'all are willing to communicate with Mr. Vaughn, absolutely all of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if y'all are good with that, then I'll let y'all communicate. Do you want a set of timeframe that we need to get this handled by, you know, get in touch with him, say in the next, give him y'all's information in the next week or two, and then you'll make your decision, your opinion, provide it to us as well in the next couple of weeks?
I would leave the timeframe to the HOA. I think they're, they're, they're agreeing with the issue, so then they can bring the issue to make it more convenient.
Sure, if they decide to wait a while, that's fine, you know, but I don't, I don't think they will, but anyway, I'm real good. So we're clear on that, moving forward, and then you'll get back with us, and y'all, I expect you probably will end up back with us. Thank y'all for your time, thank you for your request to speak, and glad we're able to handle your, start the process this evening. All right, the next item on the, the, one, okay, I just want to make sure, would you check on the conservation easement as well?
Because I can't think of any conservation use that's run business.
It's a, it's a conservation easement. It's not the same as our FUMA regulations. It's a, it's a conservation easement. I have reviewed the conservation easement. In my opinion, whether they're violating the conservation easement or not, is not an issue for Monroe County to deal with. That's between the property owners and the easement holder, which in this case, I don't, you remember who the easement holder is?
Southern Conservation Trust.
Southern Conservation Trust. We don't enforce those conservation easements, that the mechanisms for enforcement are specifically contained within those easements, and the easement holder has a right.
Clear? Y'all good? All right. Anybody that was here for those, for those, that particular portion of the meeting, y'all are welcome to leave at this time if you would like. We're going to come here a good bit longer. Anybody that's coming in, looking like to come up and find a seat, so. That'll be spread out. All right, let's keep going with the meeting tonight. We're into new business. At this time, we need to approve the agenda for the remainder of the meeting. A motion for approval, state. Got a motion from Commissioner Ambrose, got a second, Commissioner Davis. Questions, comments, conditions, conditions here and done, I'll call the question, all in favor. Oh, I'm sorry, county manager.
We will need to go into executive session for real estate.
Real estate. Okay. With that notation, that added being made, I've got a motion and a second to approve. I'll call the question, all in favor. All right, the agenda's been approved. Next item on the agenda is the minutes. A motion to approve, along 30 days, okay, got a motion to approve, got a second, got a second, Fisher Rollin, any discussion on those? Here and done, I'll call the question, all in favor. All right, the minutes have been approved. Next item on, oh, I'm sorry, that's George. Yes. I didn't know if somebody had Tourette's syndrome out there somewhere, but with him not here, it's outside, out of mind. Sorry, George. All right. The next item on the agenda, the voting booth purchase. Mr. Head, if you would, presentation.
Thank you very much. Our election superintendent, K Warren, requests purchase of five dual-station voting booths. These voting booths cost $700 each, for a total of $3,500. They also come with curtains at a cost of $190 each, for a total of $950. The total purchase is $4,742.33 to shipping. This is an unbudgeted purchase, funding would come from contingency, which is why this is being brought before the commissioners tonight. This is a photograph of what an MXB ICX-S booth looks like. All we're buying is the frame of voting equipment, just the frame. These are the curtains that go around these voting booths. The description, it's a dual-station voting booth, there are private cubicles on both front and back with wraparound curtains. The system accommodates two tablets and two printers. It has adjustable height, so it's ADA compliant. The benefits of this purchase is it allows us to go from eight to 12 voting booths in the administration lobby. It has a smaller footprint, allowing social distancing. They are foldable and easy to store, requiring less storage space. Mr. Chairman, recommendation and request from the election superintendent is to move forward with the purchase of these voting booths.
I'll take that. How about, I'll recommend we, I was about to say, why don't I get a motion first, and then I'll get a second, I got a motion to approve, back to Commissioner Ambrose. I'll have a second, got a second, Mr. Rollin, are we in discussion, any discussion on these?
Yep. These, these women handle all this, move most of this stuff, and this makes it a lot easier on them, having backs broke, this stuff, walls, wheels, and they, they want, they do a good job down there. This would make it more convenient for them to...
Absolutely. Anybody else, comments or questions? I'll just agree with Commissioner Ambrose, K Warren, it was down there, they do a great job, and all volunteers as well, and it does benefit them, they don't ask for much, and so, other than what they're required to have to provide, based on what the state makes us, makes us provide. So I think this is an appropriate request, K Warren. So saying that, we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Here and done, I'll call the question, all in favor? All right, Head, if you would. Wow, okay, yes. That's unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda is the alcohol license for Falls View Market. Ms. Kelsey Porter, if you would, please.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Boone.
So first, I have an alcohol license for Falls View Market, 4724 High Falls Road in Jackson. It's the gas station right across from High Falls State Park. The only thing is that they're just changing owners and per ordinance, any alcohol license change has to come before you to be approved or denied. They went through everything they're supposed to do, ads, background checks, all that good stuff, and checked where they're at. The name is Shandra Shakar Yadeh. And it's just small beverage and wine boxes.
I'm motioning, brother. Got a motion, Commissioner Ambrose, to approve the, that was Commissioner Amami. Yes, Imami, Commissioner Amami. Got a second. I saw the mark, Assistant Commissioner Davis, so we got a motion and a second, any discussion on them?
These aren't residents of Georgia either, are they?
Yes, he is, he's actually a resident in Tennessee right now, he's moving here.
We plan on moving down here?
This was, this was license was already granted there before he bought it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, any other questions, comments? Here and done, I'll call the question, all in favor? All right, the license has been approved. All right, next item on the agenda, Kelsey used to hear for all of these. We've got planned zoning hearings, so let me lay out a couple of ground rules for all of the hearings tonight, each side. First, you'll have the applicant for the request for us, for the commission. We'll have 15 minutes, four, that includes the presentation, the person, the group that's got the application. Then we'll have up to 15 minutes for the group that's against. You can split that up, if you're going to be for or against any of the applications, get together, decide, one person to speak, all of you to speak, if we've got more than one to speak, for or against, and we split it up, and then we'll let the course of the applicant make their presentation first, and then we'll move forward accordingly. We'll move into the public hearing, we'll start the time, work through the process, and then Kelsey's portion of it will not be timed. Then from there, we'll entertain questions during the hearing. Also, one other thing is that if anybody has a question for the applicant or for the commission, direct it this way, not to the applicant or back to the questioner. It's direct the questions, comments through the commission to the speaker. And then from there, we'll come out of the public hearing, we'll make our decision, a motion, second, and approve or deny the application. So as long as we're kind of clear on all of that, the first, the first planned zoning hearing we have tonight is JRE Services.
I'm making a motion, we're going planned zoning hearing for JRE Services.
So I'm going to take a motion to move into the public hearing, have that, and a second, Commissioner Davis, all in favor? Commissioner Amami?
Hi. Mr. Chairman, I just reminded the board on this application, we have President Henry here tonight, always to represent the board of commissioners. So if there's questions regarding this application, go ahead and direct them to Christian.
Christian, thank you for being here, and so we've got, I got a motion, second, I had the votes from everyone to move into the public hearing, so we down order the public hearing. Ms. Porter, if you would, give your presentation, please.
Yes. So first, application number one, it's Highway 42 South, revision modifications of a conditional use. 2682 Highway 42 South, map 43, parcel 13H. Property owner and applicant are the same, Joseph Egloff, JRE Services LLC. The total amount of acreage is 60, it's zoned agricultural, and it does have a current conditional use, and that is what the request is for revision and modifications of those To review, in 2018, the property owner came before the planning and zoning board and the board commissioners for the following requests. Section 71, A, agricultural district, 71.4, conditional uses, double A, slaughterhouses. This application was approved on November 6, 2018 by the board commissioners. Fifteen conditions were placed on the application. Those 15 were the only thing approved that is enforceable. And the objective again is to revise, modify the conditions. As you can see right here, this is your, this is a slaughterhouse, the yellow arrow is pointing towards it. The following conditions are being requested for change. Number one, no billboards or light signs shall be allowed. A small sign at the road for processing plant identification purposes shall be allowed. This request is not for a billboard, but a small lighted sign at the road to help farmers locate the facility in the early morning hours when it is dark. Number two, the processing of beefs shall be limited to 30 head per week. The processing of goats, lamb, and sheep shall be allowed, and the total number of livestock processed does not exceed 30 per week. The applicant, excuse me, applicant stated that he was asked why he had limitations. He was asked by the National Cattle and Beef Association to sit on a panel to speak to the Congressional Committee on Agriculture, chaired by Congressman David Scott. The topic for this discussion was the tremendous need for small to medium-sized packing houses throughout the United States. Small farmers are desperately looking for a way to process their cattle for resale, as well as home use, and Congress is looking for a way to help make that happen for them. Number three, the maximum number of animals delivered to the facility for slaughter shall be 10 per day with a maximum of three delivery days per week. The animals shall be delivered between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. The intentions for this request are not to change the hours. These hours are on our website and offer the material at our facility. However, we have customers coming from Alabama, Tennessee, the Carolinas, and Florida, and things can happen on these long trips, causing them to arrive late. As an animal welfare approved facility and USDA inspected facility, it has been a moment to turn around a trailer that has had livestock on it for an extended amount of time. Lifting this restriction will not only keep us from having calls on the office to report it, but it is also a humane thing to do. I would like to note from zoning that on few occasions, yes, the South Packers has delivered past 9:00 a.m. I have always been contacted when this occurs, and the issue is usually they've gotten lost or had car trouble, but yes, that has happened. The following conditions are either in place or not changed. Number four, no retail sales of processed product shall be allowed on site. This condition will not change. Just so you'll know as well, our ordinance follows for a rezoning to commercial with a conditional use for this to take place. Therefore, if they wanted to do resale, they have to fill out the application in front of this exact process. Number five, all beef processed shall be USDA inspected. Processing facilities shall be USDA TA inspected, approved, and monitored. The condition will not change. This is mandatory with the Department of Agriculture. Number six, municipal water is currently unavailable at property. Should the water be run to the property at the road, business shall tap on to the new water line at the expense of the processing facility. The applicant has told me that they intend to do this. Number seven, wastewater shall be captured in an approved non-domestic system. No wastewater, sludge, or liquid of any kind that is a product of the wastewater from the facility shall be distributed by spray or any other means onto the field or on the property site. No retention point shall be allowed on site. No retention point shall be allowed on site. The applicant will continue to follow this condition. Number eight, the building shall be a minimum of 700 feet from the road. The applicant will continue to follow this condition. Number nine, all waste and byproducts because of processing shall be stored inside the building in a refrigerated room and be compliant with the state processing regulations. Applicant will continue this. This is also mandatory with the Department of Agriculture. Number 10, to address the concern of the number of commercial cattle trailers, tractor trailers, and large box trucks entering the property site, there shall be no more than 10 commercial vehicles entering the property on one given day. This does not include personal vehicles. Applicant will continue to follow this condition. Number 11, all operations directly related to the processing plant shall be limited to the subject track and no other adjoining track. Applicant will continue this one as well. Number 12, these conditions shall apply to any processing facility run on this site now or anytime in the future, regardless of the name or ownership change. Applicant will continue to follow this condition. Number 13, vegetative buffers shall be established around the building as much practically possible to block the view of the building from the road and neighboring residences. The applicant has vegetative buffers in place now. From my zoning note, they do not block the view of the building. I have pictures. I will state that no, the buffers were not placed immediately. However, I did not have a time limit to enforce that, but they are there. Number 14, the building known as a processing facility shall not exceed 8,000 square feet, including conditioned and unconditioned portions of the building, as well as porches, awnings, links to, etc. This does not restrict the business or landowner from building any other structure on the property that falls within their permitted agricultural plain use. The applicant will continue to follow this condition. We will hit number 15 in just a second. This is the view from Highway 42, literally, right there on Highway 42. I took it looking up the hill at Mid-South Packers. It's Mid-South Packers. Oh, I had stayed outside. This is the fence line parallel with 42. As you can see, that's the buffer, there's your trees. Now, it doesn't cover it, the view of the building, but that is there. This is the opposite side of the building, facing the driveways and the homes. There, right there. That's the fence line. This is the front of the building when you're driving up the road, the front of Mid-South Packers. I also put these pictures in here as well to... Just to be on the safe side, to make sure everything's clean, everything's nice and neat. It is that way inside too, but since that's state regulated, I didn't mess about. But everything on the outside is clean. This is the side view of the building just seen parallel of 42. That's the side. That's the back. This is the other side facing the neighbors. That's where the cows live. This is another... It's a buffer right here alongside, this is side view of it. And this is getting the front, looking down the driveway. This is the entrance and exit. That's our current sign, and mile marker sign. And this is Highway 42, the other side, their mailbox, that's my side. This is the building plans for Mid-South Packers LLC. The building, 6,900 square feet. The holding dens, 900 square feet, or a total square feet of 7,800. And they couldn't go over 8,000. We had that in here. Number 15, proper documentation of process inspections, number of animals processed, pest inspections, and controls shall be kept up to date and submitted to the Monroe County zoning officer every 30 days. So from the zoning, Mid-South Packers has given me any documentation I've ever asked. At one point, Department of Ag intervened, scolded both of us, and said, "There's a certain way you have to do this, and he can't give you those reports directly from his office." I put in open records request. I contacted a lot of people, and I visited the site every month except for I didn't go in April. This right here is the open records request from Courtney Kaiser, explaining to me that I cannot get the reports that are detailed by day, what is killed, and everything. Good afternoon. Thank you for the email. Unfortunately, we have been advised by the USDA FSIS that we are unable to provide information related to the Townsley-Aiken establishment, which is the establishment category that South Packers falls under. Such information is exempt from public disclosure pursuant to OCGA 50-72-18. However, we are able to provide certain slaughter reports. Those reports are attached to this email. And here they are. This is Mid-South Packers. This is October. They're down here. Bulls, steers, cows, peppers, calves, and that's everything that was slaughtered. I know it's hard to see, but I have this, obviously, as open record. Everybody wants to have a thinking. There's another one. This is November. December. And just so you'll know, prior to Department of Ag scolding us, Mid-South Packers was giving me a very detailed sheet where I could actually just, I could go down to where the cows slaughtered, what day, and everything. But then we got... January 21. This one's a little closer up. And all of these are covered under that Townsley-Aiken. So that's February 21. March. So in conclusion... Oh, and April just ended, so forgive me on that. In conclusion, the conditions requested to change for this application, no billboards or light signs, processing option at 30 head per week, and the delivery of animals only from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. Planning and zoning board recommendation was to approve. The vote was a 41 vote for approval for lifting the conditions as requested and changing the delivery times to the hours of operations that Mid-South Packers operate on now. Zoning note, at this time, I wouldn't like to say if a decision was made tonight and if it was placed that you'd receive these animals in the hours of Mid-South Packers. I would have much appreciated it if we made sure we set those hours exactly. I believe they're currently operated 7:00 a.m. to 3:30. So if that's what you want to put it on, that's fine, or however you guys want to do it. And done.
Okay. Any questions for Kelsey on this? All right. One question I've got for... On number 15, is that state mandated? Or is that just something we put in?
Well, that's just something you guys put in, sir. There's four.
All right. Got a question for Kelsey. All right. This time, Mr. Egloff, you'd like for Warren... You're gonna... Oh, so you're... Sorry. Joseph, are you going to be speaking on behalf of your in the room?
Yep, I would like to split my time, if that's okay. There are some other people that have done some legwork.
Let me do it this way. How many folks here would like to speak this evening? If I show four, the applicant, I'll show my hands. One, two, Joseph, three, three. And then Joseph, do you want to speak as well?
I would like to give just a short introduction, if that's okay.
Right. So we've got 15 minutes. I will start the clock as soon as the first person starts speaking. So while you speak, and then I'll quickly let everybody know how much time they've got left. All right, go ahead.
My name is Joseph Egloff, 2682 Maynard Mill Road. On the first, I have several older farmers that have a problem seeing the mile marker sign, which we note several times. I do not, am not asking for a billboard. I'm asking for something just that would help them see. I had a sign here on my phone. If it... Could I pass this to y'all? If I could have a sign, something similar to that, it would be adequate. Or perhaps just a nightlight?
We've got that.
Okay. Or perhaps just a nightlight or a streetlight would be fine. I don't want a neon sign or anything like that. Would be happy to put a timer on it. I only need, because we don't receive cattle in the late night hours, I'd be happy to put a timer on it, that it come on at, say, 5:30 or 6 o'clock, just for when the time first changes. On the receiving hours of the cattle, we are under an animal welfare approved plant. The Department of Transportation exempts livestock trailers and pork trailers from being detained by the DOT. And to be in accordance with the animal handling welfare practices, to turn an animal around that's been on the trailer for four hours without unloading him, watering him, and sending him back would be in violation of those. And I really hate bothering... Like I say, sometimes we've been two minutes late, sometimes we've been 45 minutes late. But our intention is to get everybody there early. Would like to keep that. On the number of cattle or the number of livestock processed, yes, we did have a business plan, our original business plan. We thought we'd do about 30 head a week. That was in 2017 when that plan was first written. A lot of things have changed since then. Most everybody that's ever written a business plan, a business plan evolves. It changes. Our business plan also called for about a $360,000 payroll. Our business, our payroll now is somewhere around $494,000. Things change. I'm not able to do goats and sheep because they weigh 80 pounds. And it restricts a lot... It prevents me from helping a lot of farmers I could help. I don't see where the impact... We're still going to keep the number of trucks coming in and out the same. The traffic won't increase, so there won't be an increase in traffic there. And at this time, I'd like to yield to Mr. Sims.
We've got 12 minutes left, so four minutes of speaker for Mr. Sims.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Kelsey. My name's Stephen Sims. My address is 55... Thanks. 5549 Funky Way, Dunwoody, Georgia, 30338. Also have a residential lease at my parents' Dale and Elaine Sims at 13968 Highway 74, Colodin, Georgia, 31016. That's it, they can't kick me out anymore. But thank you, guys, for taking time to hear me today. And thank you, Joseph, for sharing the floor with me. I... Just a little bit about me. I grew up here in Monroe County. I started out at... Born here, went to school at Hubbard and Mary Persons. And afterwards, went to college and thought, you know, I needed to go outside of Monroe County to find opportunity. My family is on the farm, and if you'd asked me all the way up, growing up, said, "If you could do any job, what would you do?" I'd say, "I'd want to be a farmer." But I left thinking, you know, I couldn't make it and earn a good living doing that as a young farmer, and so I looked elsewhere. Said, "I'll get into the business community, go do something, you know, do something there." And it's been, you know, good to, for me to build those skills, but ultimately, I've wanted to be a farmer. And so, you know, one of the things I also want to do is I want to make sure our family farm is passed on to the generation beyond me. I've got three little kids. You know, I want them to be able to experience life on the farm, to know where their food comes from, and to know the value of hard work. And so part of that is with the COVID situation last year, empty store shelves. You know, I said, "Look..." Called Dad, said, "Hey, if things go really bad, if I'm in the business world and we have another 2008 recession, I'm expendable." You know, corporate America doesn't need, doesn't need me if we have a bad recession, but folks need to eat. And a lot of folks want to know where their food's coming from. They want to know that it's local. So I said, "Hey, we've talked about providing beef from the farm direct to the public. I'm going to start investigating this, and let's see if we can work together on it and see where it goes." And this was April of last year. And so through a loan process, a lot of time trying to work with the USDA to get a loan, we've been able to launch that business. We had our first head of cattle, our cattle, that Joseph's facility processed back on April 5. And folks in Atlanta are loving it. I've got folks who are saying, "I'm so glad that you're doing this. We're trying to sell to the folks in Atlanta who are my neighbors, and said, 'Look, this is coming from my family's farm.'" Since then, we've also leased a farm from a farmer who's retiring here in Monroe County, bought his herd of cattle and a lot of his equipment. We're spending a lot of money here in Monroe County to build this business. That money that folks who are my neighbors up in Atlanta, when they say, "Hey, I really want to buy this beef," that's money that's coming from the Atlanta economy, and I'm spending a good portion of that here. So it is critical for my business to be able to grow this, to be able to make farmland in Monroe County more productive and more valuable, to have these restrictions removed. 30 cattle a week, the facility, I'm not sure of the exact date, but it's been open for less than a year. And I called up last week, I was able to, or mid-April, and was able to buy some cattle that are, were slaughter-ready. They were, been finished on grass. They were beautiful cattle. Said, "Man, I need to call Joseph and see if I can get these in." It was two months out, June 15. He said, "I'm full. We can't, we're so, there's so much demand for a local processing facility like this" that it made it, you know, it was two months out. So, you know, it directly impacted my operation and my ability to be successful. So I urge you guys to please approve these recommended, these, lifting these restrictions as soon as possible. The other thing I will say is I have a little bit of experience with zoning, and, you know, I know you guys take it very seriously, as the commissioners take it very seriously to put restrictions on a business that's providing employment, providing opportunity, not just for these employees who are here, but also for the farming community in Georgia. And so I say, you know, take a look at the operations. I think probably several of you probably visited that facility. And what's the purpose of zoning, right? It's to prevent a nuisance, to prevent a problem impacting neighbors. And if you go visit that facility, I've been around the inside and the outside. You know, how is it, what nuisance exists going from 30 head a week to something larger? And I don't see it. You know, I could imagine, you know, if I lived next door, I could imagine how I would be afraid of this facility when I'm hearing about it before it's constructed. I picture something out of Exodus, right? Rivers of blood and buzzards circling overhead, and, you know, pests growing everywhere. But that's not what you see. There are no... You go around that facility, and if you've got a sensitive nose, you're never going to be offended. There's nothing that's going to say, "Oh, man, this is a slaughter facility. This is gross." There is none of that. It is clean. And I look, I look through the zoning regulations, I look at permitted uses, churches, daycares, recreational facilities, all of the things that seem to be a concern about traffic, noise, bad smells, all this. I don't see how the permitted uses, Joseph, to my opinion, Joseph's facility is cleaner and less potential for nuisance even at an expanded capacity than this. So I just urge you guys, from a farmer and a young farmer and a new small business owner that's operating here in Monroe County, please, please approve lifting these restrictions on this facility. And I would ask too, previously, I drove by that dairy. There used to be a dairy there. I drove by that dairy every day going to school. And, you know, if that dairy were to go back in, there are so much more nuisance from bad smells and things like that than Joseph's facility would ever provide. So I just urge you guys, please, do the right thing and open up these restrictions. Thank you.
Good next. Mr. Sims, again, please, Mr. Sims, come on. While you're coming up, I wasn't clear to give you enough things about time. So I'm going to hold up two fingers, you've got two minutes left, one, and then, you know, and I do something like that, you'll shut and stop. Went over a little bit, so you've got three minutes. Go ahead, Mr. Sims, please.
I'll be very brief. I'm Dale Sims. I live at 13968 Georgia Highway 74, Colodin. Been there since 1979. I'm also the nurse manager at Forest Correctional Training Center in Detroit. So my son is beginning at the early end of being a cattle...
So my son is beginning at the early end of being a cattle and a farmer. I'm at the end of that as far as my nursing degree. I intend to retire very soon and be full-time back in the cattle business that I grew up in in middle Florida with my dad and his father. So we have a long history of cattle raising. This is gonna be different, no antibiotics, all on grass, uh, which is foreign to me, I intend to learn. But, um, the main thing is, uh, these restrictions will hinder any growth of my son's business. It'll also hinder me from becoming a more, uh, substantial rancher on my own, and that's really all I'll say.
Sims, all right, we've got four minutes left, please, if you want to speak.
Thank you, David, address. Thank you, Clay Sanders, fifty Healthwell Road. Uh, I'm a cattle farmer here in Monroe County, and I've been doing this all my life. And having this, uh, arbiter here in Monroe County is just a great opportunity for us, under these new COVID, you know, times, to promote and sell beef from locally, from the farm straight to the consent. And what Joseph's facility does is gives us an avenue to get this done locally. Um, if you, I called other two arbiters that were roughly fifty miles next closest to me, and one of them said, I can have you a slot in September, and the other one said, I can have you a slot at the end of August. And what we have to realize with these steers, this is a perishable item. Once you get them to the correct weight, they're gaining four, four and a half pounds a day, but if you gotta hold them an extra hundred days, you're talking about four hundred more pounds, and then they sort of don't fit in the box. So this is a great opportunity for, to have this here in Monroe County, and it really helps Monroe County. And I'm also working with a local business to sell local beef in a restaurant in town. So this, having this arbiter here helps with that as well. But I wanted to just encourage y'all to, if you lift the restrictions, it will benefit, and I see very little downside to it. Thank y'all.
All right, that's twelve minutes and thirty seconds, we've got two and a half minutes left, on your fifteen, if, if anybody else has anything to wanna speak for. If not, then we can move to the again, and of course, we'll reserve some time for, for rebuttal of any statements, uh, on the against side. Um, I believe, so first, by show of hand, I know that Warren is gonna speak on behalf of his client. Um, is anybody else here to speak against? Okay, Vaughn, all right, so, can, uh, Warren, do you know how long you need? And then can you, Mr. Vaughn, quickly kind of ascertain how much time you need?
You wanna, you know, wait?
Three minutes, twelve, or you wanna let Mr. Vaughn go first, and then, and that way you get the remainder of the time?
That'd be valid.
Fair enough. James, come on up, please, sir. Say your name and address, of course, thank you.
My name is James Vaughn, and I live at two forty-two Vaughn Road out this way. And we've been in the cattle business here in the county since, uh, nineteen forties. And I understand the cattle business, and I understand that it's true that we, we do need more processing capacity in the United States generally, and, and here. Um, my experience is that getting a slot at an arbiter is not as difficult as maybe Mr. Sanders or somebody, maybe, maybe that's involved with planting a head, but we do some of that too, and not much, most of our cattle are shipped out of state, the Eglow's cattle. But what, what I, what I'm concerned about is mainly the thirty-head limit, okay? Um, if, if we, if we make, uh, an unlimited facility, then we outgrow it quickly. And then we can be back here wanting to expand the size of it. The reason I'm interested in this is, my family has a six hundred fifty-nine acre tract that is behind Mr. Eglow's property. It's adjacent to it, it's not adjacent to the property in the LLC, but it's adjacent to his property general. And I think that there needs to be some limits set on it. These are not limits that the Commission set. These are limits that Mr. Eglow set. He sat in front of me before he came to the Commission and said, here's a printed sheet with what I wanna do, and thirty head a week was on that printed sheet. And he said, that's size to the size building, to the number of trailers we're bringing in, all of that. Now, if we go to an unlimited thing, then we're not gonna possibly be able to use the same size building, the same number of trailers, and it goes from something that we're seeing in pictures potentially to something completely different. So I would urge the Commission, and I truly understand, having sat in your chair, Mr. Tapley, that these decisions are hard, and there are factors weighing on both sides, uh, that, in favor of or against. But this doesn't, this is a small industrial facility, let's call it what it is, in an agricultural and residential area. Let's don't let it get out of control. We need to, if we're gonna change it from thirty, let's pick a number and stick with that. And I also think you need to, uh, think about, you know, whatever limitations on the signage that he's showing you. You know, let's, let's figure out what size and how, how much lighting and all of that for the, for the benefit of the neighbors. I don't think it'll bother my trees, but in the future, there might be some of my family members living out there. So, um, that's really all I have to say, and hope I didn't use up too much of this time.
Psych, y'all, from here.
That's three minutes, and you've got twelve, you've got some handouts for us.
Yeah, these, this is one stack of documents, I've given one to the clerk, most of them you have already. It is the staff report that Ms. Fortner has gone through, the meeting minutes that were attached to it that had the conditions from before, the, uh, business plan for Mr. Eglow, and then there's two documents you haven't seen before, and that's basically, uh, me doing my job in terms of providing constitutional rights letter, y'all know what that is. Uh, and the other one is an affidavit from a real estate appraiser, which I'm gonna touch on here in just a second. But as I begin, my name is Warren Tillery, I'm a lawyer at Smith, Welch, Woden, White, McDonough. My address, twenty-two hundred Keysbury Court, uh, McDonough. Uh, I'm here representing Craig Martin, who owns the property immediately adjacent to it, although I think my comments to this are going to be applicable to anybody that's within that area. Um, originally, the way that this was advertised in the staff report that was put out as Exhibit One there shows that what the applicant was seeking is a removal of all conditions, and that gravely concerns us. In fact, we've got at least one opinion from a real estate appraiser that says if all of the conditions were removed, it would basically render, uh, Mr. Martin's property effectively worthless. Um, now, I understand that we are not there at this point today. Where we are is basically the conditions that are being sought for modification are down to thirty. And that's great, so I think that that actually gives us some room to talk about, uh, where we can go from here. The problem and the concern that we have is whether this is going to be too big, too fast, uh, and whether this is really an angle at a bait and switch. So this is the business plan that Mr. Eglow prepared, he presented, this was the zoning that he sought. Most of the conditions that were applied to the property came directly out of his business plan, he consented to those conditions. Now the facility is built, it's there, it exists, it's in operation, he wants either removal of all or removal of a few, with the idea that once you remove a few, it becomes easier to remove a few more, and it becomes easier to, Mr. Vaughn said, have this thing get a little bit out of hand. But dealing with the three conditions specifically, uh, you've got one, the lighted sign. And my client, that's a big issue for him. Uh, I think if you look at the delivery times, they're proposing somewhere between seven and three, or seven and nine, or something, uh, I'll be candid with you, we don't really mind what the delivery times are so long as we know what to expect, they're not in the middle of the night, or early, early in the morning, and they're not, you know, on a weekend when you're home trying to enjoy stuff. Now, there may be some considerations that the Commission has to take into account, such as traffic on the road, or the school buses, or whatever. But, but at least from Mr. Martin's standpoint, the delivery times are really not that big of a deal. The question is, what are they gonna be? And once you set what they're gonna be, then you know whether Mr. Eglow needs a lighted sign or not. Um, but even so, I think that with a larger sign, it looks like they've got essentially a real estate sign out there now. And I can imagine that'd be difficult to see. So have him present a sign plan that shows what they're going to put. Uh, but in this particular character of that area, lighted sign doesn't go with that. Um, now, the head of cattle, that's gonna be the big issue. And what we've seen from the reports that Ms. Fortner showed is that he hasn't been sticking with the limit that he set and was approved by this. He was maybe in the beginning, but in a lot of those reports, what you'll see is that there's, you know, forty-six steers, there's some other number, so he's exceeding that number already even though it's in place. So now he wants you to remove it entirely, and that gives rise to a large problem, the biggest of which, big, I'm still unclear as to how big the facility really is, because what I heard Ms. Fortner say is that the waste storage facility under the conditions is gonna be seven thousand square feet, but that the processing plant's gonna be eight thousand square feet. Now, if it's a maximum of eight thousand square feet, you are going to be limited in some amount in the number of cattle that you can just physically process. So let's not give them an unfettered no limitation, let's set the limit at something that's realistic. Uh, my client doesn't want to limit him to something that's gonna put him out of business or cause him any undue harm, but he also can't agree to having just no limit at all. And so we would suggest that perhaps a reasonable limit is thirty-five, or something, you know, in, in the ballpark of the range that they're actually being shown as, as processing, but not going beyond that. Um, the other issue that we've got is that that only, you know, accounts for beef, it doesn't account for things such as deer, doesn't account for things like, um, sheep or other things, other than there is that overall limit of the total number of other animals can't exceed whatever the limit is here, but he's asking for there to be no limit. So while this is a USDA facility with regard to beef, there are things such as custom exempt, um, processing, that doesn't require inspection, that can go through this facility without getting to it being the inspected beef that we're really talking about. So what I would urge the Commission to do tonight in viewing this request is place some effective, meaningful limitations on this. If those, if the Commission feels like that's not what's in place now, that it's not working, and you're inclined to move it to something else, let's move it to something that is reasonable, and something that is, uh, reasonable in light of the conditions that are applicable to the types of use that we're looking at here, which is not automatic. Um, so for that reason, you know, I'll leave it with you all, and thank you for your time.
Any questions, real fast, Warren, just to put this?
Yes, I, I, I've got one. Um, you mentioned that, that the reports that Ms. Fortner gave showed that he was exceeding the amount that he required, he, he, he's allowed thirty heads per week. And the ones that she showed us is a month, a big, I don't know, it's a, a hundred and twenty months.
Well, it's a hundred and thirty-two a month, that's gotta have four point four weeks, that's a month.
So I hadn't seen those reports before today, so I saw them on the screen, and I'm sitting on the front row, which means I'm looking up like it's an IMAX movie. I understood those reports to be on a per-weekly basis, not a per-monthly basis. If it is per month, then I stand corrected.
Cause I had to look at, look at myself.
Right.
I'll go there, eh.
But if it, if it is that, what it does show is that he's actually not at the capacity then, right? So the highest month that I recall seeing was somewhere in the ballpark of forty-six, at least on the steers.
Uh, ninety-five, it looks like March is ninety-five.
And, and the capacity's a hundred and twenty, or somewhere in that, that range?
Hundred and twenty if you got it.
Right, and, and I understand too, part of that may be that, you know, you're not gonna have a truck show up with ten cows, maybe, it's gonna have something else, or whatever the case may be, but he's not quite at capacity yet. So we'd still ask that the limit not just be done away with entirely, that there be some reasonable limitation on it. And if the limit, you know, for example, if he, if the limit is something else, and two years down the road, everything is going smoothly, and he needs to increase it some more then, when there's a process, which is what we're here to do now, but at least then there's a check to balance. Because what Ms. Fortner said is the only things that are enforceable are those conditions. And once you get rid of those conditions, the genie can't go back in the box.
I just want, I, all I wanted to do was make sure that you realize that, or, or you are aware that, that Ms. Fortner was watching those reports, and they were not exceeding, uh, she's, she's saying a month of reports, it's a carry, she's sparring, she's saying she can't exceed a week.
That's what your report gap, I've been on the scene, a hundred and twenty, yeah. One other question, you brought up something about square footage, um, and, and I didn't follow you on, you said something about seven thousand, eight thousand. Eight thousand's the limit there, seventy-eight hundred, where was the other number you was?
So that's what I understood before tonight, completely, and, and this is not, this could just be my old age and decrepitude, and, and seeing it for the first time and not anything related to Ms. Fortner. What I understood it to be was eight thousand. Um, what I understood the slides to be, when she went through the conditions, was that they were asked, that some of the conditions, for example, that they said were not going to be changed, was number nine, the size of the waste storage, and that was seven thousand. But then when you get down to condition number fourteen, it's eight thousand square feet.
She's gonna bring it back to, to that fee, wouldn't that it? What was the first number you said?
Condition number nine.
And what was the problem with it? That's the condition, let me repeat.
Yeah, so, well, we can look at fourteen for a minute, this'll sort of illustrate the point. Building known as the processing facility should not exceed eight thousand square feet. So if that's all of it, and that's what I understood the condition to be, there's a, a different condition that was dealing with the space for the storage of just the animal byproduct waste, which I understood implied to be seven thousand. Now, keep in mind, I'm looking back at it as I'm looking at it, but, but what I understood to be was the eight thousand. But I, I don't know that that really changes the analysis, because again, this facility's not on municipal water, it's on well water. You're gonna have some limitations on the amount of water you've got, you've got limitations if it's eight thousand total in what you can process. So I, I still think it comes back to there being a, a, a number that needs to be reached. And then if we need to change the number down the road, we can do it. Just would urge you all not to obliterate it entirely.
Any other questions, uh, uh, any other questions for Warren? All right, you, you didn't, we started asking you questions, so that's when the time for you stops. We actually have a few extra minutes, so if there's anybody else that was here that wanted to speak against, has the right to do so. And, Marcus, did you have a?
No, I, I was thinking he was talking about the building plan, Ms. Alpeck, it's the layout in there he got.
Blue area is sixty-nine hundred, and then the red area, which is the whole of the building, is nine hundred, and that's included in the total size.
And, and that's what I understood it to be before tonight, and so apparently what I thought I saw as I sat here, was not what I actually saw.
Okay.
Uh, but I don't think it changes the overall.
Your point is taken, I, I understand what you were trying to say. All right, so I am gonna give Mr. Eglow a couple of minutes to come back up to address, uh, there are a couple of points you want to address there.
I, I would like to note that we're not asking for the size of the building to change, and the production of that building is limited, the number of head that we can put through that building is limited because of the size of the building. However, we, when, if you read the regulations, it said not to exceed thirty head of animals, period, whether it be beef, goats, or sheep, um, inspected or non-inspected. Those animals still counts under that thirty head per week. Um, I have some goat and sheep farmers that we could produce, we could process some of their goats and sheep, because they do not hang, they do not have a hang time the way beef does. We could probably do fifteen or twenty of those in a day on a Friday afternoon or a Monday morning. But I can't afford to process, because I would take away from the production that I need to pay my bills, and my, so we're, or Mr. Vaughn? So we're, for Mr. Vaughn's concern, we're not asking, you know, the, the size of the building is self-limiting. Beef needs to hang for approximately fourteen, twenty-one days. I'm a fourteen-day guy. But my facility, my holding area will not hold but seventy head of beef at the max on the rail at any given time. Having said that, probably if we ran nothing but beef, probably about forty head, would, would you say forty head or so would be a weekly, and somewhere forty, forty-five would be the most, at outside most, if there were some burger bulls in there or something other. But what it limits us to is, like I said, the small animals for the small hoof farmers. And one of the, the things about the, the number of head, which is limited by the building, but trying to get those reports is like pulling hen's teeth with the Department of Agriculture. And that was why we're trying to deal away with that. The building size will limit the amount of production that we can do. And I, I do note that I would have to come back in order to build an add-on or whatever, I'd have to come back before the commission.
Quick question. How long do you have to hang that feed?
Have, it's, you don't have to hang it for fourteen days. Some people don't. We hang fourteen, twenty-one days. We have a rotating rail system. In the beginning, we were hanging for twenty-one, and we were having some issues with some mold, so we went back to the fourteen day. But fourteen day is about your, your minimum. Twelve, fourteen day is about the minimum.
So if your capacity is seventy, and you got a hole of fourteen days, that basically says you can do thirty-five a week?
That's, that's, that's what I'm saying. Of, of beef, however, of sheep or goats that don't have a hang time, and their carcass, instead of, instead of a hanging weight being six to eight hundred pounds, you got the hanging weight of sixty pounds. Those animals could, you know, then, instead of them coming in one or two at a time, they'd come in twelve or fourteen at a time. But the, the number of head, the way it's worded and what we've tried to adhere to is the number of animals. So therefore, a goat that weighs sixty pounds on the rail has the same value, according to the rule, as an eight-hundred-pound steer. So obviously, in order for me to make payroll, I can't take away a slot for a steer to do a small farmer's goat.
Yeah. And then another thing we talked about, I know at the meeting two years ago, was deer processing.
Correct.
And you were not going to do any deer processing.
We, we do not have a, it's, I'm not really, I'm not saying that I wouldn't like to do some deer sausage and some specialty items, but we're not set up, the way that we're set up is not conducive for a deer. There again, I'd have to add extra coolers, or it would have to come in already in a cooler. It's, it's, the building, I would encourage y'all to come see the building, if you haven't been there. Some, some have come to see. I think it would, if you toured it, you would get a better understanding of what its capability is.
I think the reason that, one of the, one of the reasons that we didn't allow deer processing is, okay, right now you have a seven to nine delivery. And when you went to seven to five, okay, but if, but if I killed a deer, I'd have to fucking not see, so that was the problem.
Yeah, I understand. And we, we, we can clean up after, because we're, we're a USDA inspector facility. My inspector has an office in my facility that I provide for her. She is there during hours of operation. We cannot process after she goes home. We can clean up after she goes home. But I think that's a, that's, a lot of people don't understand that she has to be...
But that's for the beef.
She, she is there.
That's for the beef pork, they wouldn't be there for deer.
We're still a TA inspector facility. We're not, it's not like a deer cooler. I'm not, I would have to ask her that. I'm not sure that I could, how that would operate, even if it, if, if it could. I'm, that, I don't...
So are you even asking for deer whatsoever?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay. Still off topic.
That, that's not what I'm, I'm not saying that I wouldn't process one for my, myself or my neighbor or something other, but that, that's, we're not, we're not wanting to be a deer processing facility.
What's women's in you to the amount of cattle you can hang fourteen days?
The, the space which our building is, the rail space.
You need another cooler to do that?
I would have to, I would have to come back and get permission to make, to exceed the eight thousand square feet, which, where, that was one of the conditions that we were not requesting, because I thought, well, if, if we don't ask for a bigger building, then people would understand that we can't do five hundred a week, or it can't grow into something that is... The building has its limiting factor of what it can tote, so to speak. And one of the reasons we left that part there, it was obvious that it would be limiting, just like the number of trucks coming in. We didn't ask for the number of trucks to change. We're asking for the number of head to be removed, so that we don't have to try to figure out how we can get those reports to you. It's, it's amazing how much time you can spend trying to get a report emailed to somebody.
All right. We set the limit at thirty, total, total animals. Looking back, if you were here in two thousand, go back to two thousand eighteen, what's the number you would have asked for at that time?
Of total, it's kind of, it's kind of, it's kind of hard, you know, to have that magic ball look in. It's like, it's like, for instance, the business plan, as I mentioned a while ago. Business plans evolve and things change. The, we could, we could only run about, even at very, very best, if we just ran beef cattle, we could run about forty to forty-five on the, if everything just clicked and smoothed really, really well, and there was no big cattle, and all of them were small. However, then, some of the goat farmers and sheep farmers, because you're looking at animals that's only forty to sixty pounds on the rail, you know, you could do, of those, you could do fifteen to twenty-five a day, because they're much, much smaller. Unfortunately, I can't, I, I don't have a, a hard number, you know, I'm not, I, I can't give you a hard number there.
What I'm trying to arrive at is, trying to get, you had some suggestions about limiting it. Okay, increase the limit, but set it at something, not make it unlimited. I'm in agreement with that. Then it's a matter of, maybe if I'm, I'm just using what you've just said right now. You use thirty-five or forty head of beef, and then you add fifteen, just like fifteen goat or sheep a day, and how many days a week are you up to?
Five.
Well, it doesn't matter to me, but so by in a week's time, you're over five, seventy-five, fifteen. So you're talking about in a week's time, you go forty and add seventy-five, it's a hundred and fifteen total animals, you know? But if we set it at a hundred and fifteen like that, then all of a sudden, if we only set it as, as total animals, then, you know...
Sure, and, and that, that, I understand what you're, I understand what you're saying. The, the facility, even at very, very best, the facility, if you were running just beef cattle, could not exceed, as it's, as it's built today, forty-five to fifty could not go through there the way that we, the way that we're set up.
One, one of the things that I'm trying to do, and for us to, and I think, I think all of us would be in agreement, we'd rather it not come back again. And so we want to try, try to raise cans now, you know, to, to, you know, try to be one to do what's fair and right with business owners and property owners and all. So, you know, you, you said forty-five or fifty, so, I mean, but one of the things too, I need to make sure, make sure Commissioner Napier knows, that we can ask, when we talk about changing conditions, this is the time to ask for them, and then when we come out, if we make a motion, if there's a motion to change it, that's when we set it, but you get them to agree to it in this, in this portion of the hearing. And I'll look at, well, I'll look at Christian to ask if that's correct, if we get those, any conditions, we get them agreed to at this part of time of the hearing. But there might, there might come out the hearings, I mean, after this vote, hearing, if I'm not voting, it might be something, I vote, that won't be having to do with my mate. But I got, well, so, you know, so one of the conditions that you asked for, that you're covering, you know, if it's not unlimited, are you willing to accept, say, forty-five?
Yes, I, what, the, and, and I, I, I obviously would accept whatever y'all give me. The, the factor is, I would, the, instead of it taking an hour and a half and Miranda's time a week trying to get a report, and, and I felt kind of bad telling Kelsey, you know, look, my hand's been slapped, I can't, I can't send this anymore. And it went from being something very easy to do, to being something that was nearly impossible to do. And if you say, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll get the reports ourselves from the Department of Agriculture, then that would be fine and good, but I'm just saying that it's, some of that is difficult.
I don't think we have a choice, but you're with the Department of Agriculture.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
But then you can't give them to us.
I can't, I can't, I'm not allowed to give them.
So you don't need to worry about that.
If I'm not, then, then that's, but before, that was trying to go through and making calls to the Department of Agriculture, trying to get them released. I called trying to get them released, sent emails trying to get them released, because I was trying to...
All right, here, here's one. Okay. He can't give us a report of how many head that he does per week. The Department of Agriculture will give us a number of how many per month. How can we, we can only enforce something that we can get a report of? So I don't even know that the per week...
I, I get that. Do the math real quick. Let's also assume, I'm, I'm, I'm not just making it up, that in that for an increase, we're not going to, I don't think that the limit is, is going to be where we would go. If we went to forty-five, you times that by fifty, two weeks, that's twenty-three hundred and forty, and then you divide that by twelve months, it's a hundred and ninety-five. So you'd have a hundred and ninety-five animals that you could process in a month's time. So we're changing, if we, if we were to change it, if that even goes through, it would be per month as opposed to per week. So, so, so it's, you follow my math on that, too?
Yes.
Just so we're clear.
Yes.
Animals, not just big animals.
Animals.
That don't include the sheep.
Correct.
But that does include...
Yep. And so, and there again, the, the re, I, that, that limit cuts out the, that cuts out the sheep and the goat farmers, because I can't, I can't afford to, to give up a slot for a goat, for, for me to be a beef, a beef operation, um, which is, I understand.
Someone make a, make a motion for more or less, I'm just, that's using those numbers, you know? But then...
Isn't that a good time for comments? We don't wait on it.
We're, we're in the quest.
What I don't like, what we're doing, Mr. Egloff, I've monitored this place since we went into the operation. I've been out there three times. I was out there one time, and you're actually there, and I got a tour of the business, I think. This is eight thousand square feet we talked about, plus, and number fourteen says you can build any other structure on it you want to, it's out there away from this building. Why don't you build a holding pen out there fifty feet from the building, and put a swing gate where they come in and take that eight, nine hundred square feet, put another cooler out there, and you can handle more feed? Well, that way, if you call me saying, we don't have a place to process beef around here, I've got a beef processor in a residential subdivision in my district, and I go out there, and he does deer, he'll, he'll process anything you bring to him.
And he can, I understand.
You don't get all the smell or anything, you know? It's, it's a pretty clean operation. When I went through yours, I mean, you could just about eat off the floor in a place, you don't smell anything. I think we're crazy for limiting to forty-five animals. Then, if you can do, I say a limit that, because he knows how many you can do, and that, that holding pen is not closed, then it could be, which this says it could be in the way. But if you move that away from the building, that gives you nine hundred by it, eleven hundred square feet that you could do more with, put another cooler, whatever.
Well, the, actually, the, the holding pens is included in the eight thousand.
It is right now, but if you moved it fifty feet away from it, it wouldn't be. Then you'd have nine hundred, eleven hundred square feet.
I was trying to, I was trying to interpret and follow to what I felt like was intended. And it was mentioned in the planning and zoning meeting that the rules have been changed for me already, but the rules have not been changed for me. And I have tried to, to follow them to the best of my ability. And I'm, even though we gave up a lot of storage, I mean, I, I can't even get a full load of boxes in at one time, because I have no place to store them. Like, we, we trimmed it down, and trimmed it down, and trimmed it down. And originally, I thought, when they were talking about square footage, the first time square footage of a house in Monroe County was measured by the conditioned space, I thought the heating and cooling was square footage. And then I find out later that, well, my facility, even the porches and the overhang was considered square footage. So I went back and redrew it smaller even again, and I'm, I'm fine and good with that. But I was, I was trying not to skirt around. And like I say, I, as far as the light is signed, I'm, I'm not asking for a bill, I don't want to, don't need a billboard or anything like that, but when the time first changes, I do have farmers coming in and it's dark, and a lot of my farmers are, Mr. Busby the other day came in, he drove by my place three times. He was trying to get there early, and he was coming in before daylight, but he was trying to get there early, but he's seventy-eight years old, and thirty minutes early is on time to him.
We, we need to discuss that real fast. Your points were taken, something about numbers, we need to talk about the sign, size, but I, I've got to say this, to tell you, you did correct my limit, that's holding pen and that's square footage.
I, I was trying, I've...
And, and I, I, I just don't agree with Commissioner Ambrose, it needs to be in that square footage.
Well, and I'm trying, and I, I'm not asking, and that's, that's, I'm not asking for any more square footage.
I know, I was told last year, but you know, I'm, I'm...
I'm not, I'm not asking for any more square footage, and that's, that's what I thought.
I know, you didn't have, but that was, that was...
No, that's, that, that wasn't my...
But that pen wasn't supposed to be, it's been a workable area, it's not our, like, size of business practice. You know, that's, it's likely how we're here to decide what you apply, the change.
And that's the reason I had, I didn't ask for any, my thinking was that if someone logically looked at the square footage that I had, and took time to see my facility and understand the process, they would understand that I can't run a hundred and twenty head through there a week. I wasn't asking, what I was trying to avoid is to get around the reporting of the number of cattle in which...
Per week.
Per week.
Per month.
Per month. And but now, since y'all want to take that responsibility on, and I don't have to worry about it anymore, then, because those reports are given to the Department of Agriculture, I have to give those anyway. So I've done my part. If I'm not obligated to submit those to y'all, then I, I can quit worrying about that. And on the sign, something similar to what my neighbor has would be fine with me. Nothing bright, no neon, no, just...
What, what size sign? We're talking about a four by four sign?
I think that one out there is like a four by eight. I'm thinking something, something similar to that. And it doesn't have to have a light on it. I can get by with a security light, like they, like people have in their yards. I could have one of those plates down there.
Why don't you just do a reflector?
I hadn't thought about that. I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a sign...
No, no, really, really, if you put reflectors on it, you're talking, there's nothing lit there until a vehicle tops the hill, and it's still on this, but, but reflectors would do exactly what you want.
I, I'm not, I hadn't, I hadn't thought of this.
Without, without causing problems to the neighbors, I mean, I really think that would be...
I hadn't, I hadn't thought about, I, I...
So you're asking for up to a four by eight? So you're asking for up to a four by eight sign, which is based on using your neighbors as an example?
Correct.
Any thoughts, or you want to confirm that line?
Yes.
So we did, and we also just, to discuss lighting a second too, making sure, no neon, things like that, but, um, and, and if you do lighting, I like the timer idea, if there is lighting on it, just do it. Cause you're not going to have any in the evening at all.
Correct, and, and there again, it's not, it's, it's not a, this is not a deer cooler.
Then a reflective sign would be just as good.
I, I, I didn't, I just simply did not think of the reflectors.
Time by twenty up to a reflective sign?
Um, I, 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 a reflective sign never darkened my, never, I never.
Save your running power to it.
I, I just never thought of, I, I never thought about that.
You don't have any problems with the roll thing about that reflective sign?
Okay, and, and fair enough, okay, reflectors, I'm, I'm fine with that, um, and then, four by eight is the size he's using, that he's suggesting.
That was a lit sign though.
That's the sign.
Which is the sign that the neighbors have on their, on their building.
Right, that's lit.
That's illuminated.
I understand. For illuminated signs, let him go bigger if he wants and get it in there. Cause that was a, that was an illuminated sign, that.
He's only asking for up to four by eight.
Four by eight.
So I mean.
Can I ask what sign the neighbor has, about, yeah, Webster neighbor, I think we're going to use where that is maybe?
Does Wilson own it?
That, that's not at the road. That's, that's at least seven hundred foot from the road. But we're, we're not talking about a road sign there.
Well, and that, and that's on the building.
Okay.
It's got sound. I think what he's talking about is a standalone sign, it's at the road.
So what size? Who's that four by eight?
I see what you're saying.
If, if, if y'all want to take the sign off the table, I'm fine with that.
But I mean, you want.
I can put up, I'll, I'll put up a farm sign or something other that has nothing to do with Mid-South Packers and take the farm, take the, that, that's fine. I, I.
I've got a question for you on that. This sign you're showing here, Wilson, were you talking about putting that size sign at the road or on the side of your building?
At the road.
I, I was thinking, I'm sorry, that's, yeah, I wouldn't have any problem.
I'll do it too.
All right, uh, so let's be clear about where, where we are so far. We'll come, if, if there's going to be a change made, there'll be, there'll be a number, one commissioner will make a motion to.
And I, I, I think there's, there's a, a sign ordinance already in place, and I'm, I'm, I'm happy to stay within that ordinance, you know. I follow the rules that are printed. I don't have that ordinance, I don't know that ordinance, but.
Kelsey, is there a sign, uh, size limitation?
Yes, not at the road, but in front of a, in front of a building, the sign shall not exceed twenty-five percent of that building. Side and rear shall not exceed fifty percent.
Right, but what if, so, but he's, he was requesting something for the road, so I'm trying to get some agreeable, if, if, if we can.
It just says that if you have a sign that has a light on it, it can't have strobe lights, can't be distracting, don't come in traffic, or anything like that. That's, that's basically what it says. Just can't distract traffic.
Do we have a size, four by eight reflective fitness by, on the road? The road? I mean, we just need to be able to pull out of our driveway without triggering the, the, I'm struggling to.
Totally agree with that.
But now that you brought the sign issue up, can we bring the picture of the sign on front of the building, which is, sounds like it's against those. Let's get back to the size of the sign. That's something we should have addressed in the past, that's, that's on the front of the building, and the limitation is twenty-five percent of the size of the, of the whole front of the building?
But now, that's a hard show from the road.
Four by eight reflective.
Four by eight reflective at the road is okay. So that's the maximum, if you want to do it smaller, to, to be less obstructive, uh, it sounds like that would be fine too. So that would be the maximum. All right, so we've got a four by eight, uh, road, a sign for the road. Some number, whatever the pleasure of the board is on the, on the number, and what goes one other, oh, the times, the delivery times.
Delivery times.
Take away the delivery time, no restriction, and the number of cattle, or the number of animals. If we don't restrict them, he, he knows how many cows he can do. Take away the restriction on that, take away the restriction on goats and sheep, cause he knows where he can get by, what to do.
So, so on the delivery time, and whatever the pleasure of the board is, he, he's agreed to down to forty-five, so we know. If you go above that, of course, he'll agree to that.
Well, he's going to be back if we don't.
That's a different story, uh, I'm talking about for tonight. The, no billboards or lighted signs, uh, uh, we want to go to a four by eight reflective up to that. We'll come up with a number, and then the delivery times. Uh, because I do understand this issue about someone traveling from, from, from a distance, getting caught in some kind of traffic, uh, getting here that pushes them back past nine A.M. You know, that being bad for the animals, I don't have any desire to see that happen, distress them, and all that. Uh, I think that's, it may, and so from there, um, you know, what, what's the?
Take away the restriction on delivery, because the time we had, and that's bad for school buses and everything. What's the matter when it comes in? Well, my favorite was thirty schools, he's a school bus, we need to, cause around seven o'clock, I know the buses come through there probably, you got that. Though, uh, cattle are coming, that's my, my.
Open, it's at what time?
Seven, open, seven.
But he might have cows in the pen from yesterday, so they got something to work on, just play one at a time, restraint.
Well, that's, I mean, of course he would, of course he would do that. My, my point being, what are you willing to get limited down?
You, it, that, that is, that's really not something, if, if y'all want to leave it at nine o'clock, that's, that's fine, you can take that one off the table. Because that will be, um, the, our federal veterinarian told me the other day, because I had, I had, had cattle coming. They suggested that, um, because, and I don't know all the rules and regulations, I can call the, the federal vet, she can come and approve the cattle to be turned around. However, someone, that trip has got to be charged to someone. And she suggested that whoever imposed the restrictions on me to have those cattle turned around, keep me in compliance, could be responsible for that. And I, I was. My, my, my thought was, my thought was that if there wasn't a time restriction, that we could safely, humanely unload the cattle at whatever time they're.
I, I do want to, I do want to hear.
Christian, say, we can be liable for, uh, the charges for delivery if we impose a nine A.M. delivery cutoff time, and then they didn't get there on time?
And then turn them.
Thank you. I mean, I just, I, I don't know that, but that's.
I'll back that one, that won't work.
I mean, you're saying that's.
Why do we even want to restrict him all the time, if farmers can bring the animal? He's got one now, that was put on by us, and it should have been put on.
Now, go ahead. All that we ask is, is that it's not done all night?
Yeah. Yeah, and, and.
We don't have, we don't have a problem with it.
And I understand what you're saying, and, and I just want to be reasonable about it, reasonable about this. I have, I have a neighbor go to my house and keep his up to five o'clock in the afternoon.
Nine o'clock.
If they come later than that, I'm not very happy with it, but, but I think it's, you know, and I, I'm not going to say, I'm not saying now I'm going to vote or not, but I'm, I am saying just, as a reasonable neighbor, I would expect somewhere between seven and five, then, then we're done.
We're not open till five, four, three, nine.
Just set up our business hours.
We're, we're not open.
So, all right, Mr. Vaughn, you have a question?
I, I have a, I have a question that's just from the standpoint of us citizens who are relying on what you do, protect our property. Um, I understand Mr. Eggloss's concerns too, but, you know, we set a set of conditions that, that everybody agreed to, and here pretty shortly, we're asking to relieve the most important one, which is the number of cattle. And, you know, I don't want to make a complete slippery slope. If he gets, you know, he's not a nuisance now, everything's great, but when you get over capacity, it's when problems start happening. And remember, Mr. Eggloss is the one that proposed this limitation, y'all didn't put it on. I mean, he handed me a piece of paper in my office before that zoning hearing and said, here's what I'm willing to be limited by. And I restricted my comments based on that if you were going to give him what he asked for, that that would be okay. If he's now saying thirty is not enough, let's come up with a number that is. I haven't heard him put one out of his mouth yet, but I can understand, I can understand, he said forty-five cattle is the maximum the thing will run. Um, seems like, man, that's a pretty good number. Cattle, and then he goes another, so many for the smaller room, you know?
He was a minimal of a hundred and ninety-five a month, which is forty-five, yeah, which is forty-five a week. That's all. Another question.
Yes, uh, Stephen Sims, uh, my, my question is, uh, is to the, to the commissioners that, you know, we just heard Mr. Vaughn said there's no nuisance at thirty. Why do we think some, that this group can assign some arbitrary number to control Mr. Eggloss's business for a nuisance that, if the numbers increase, let's say it's three hundred a month, there's been no evidence showing there's going to be any nuisance caused by that. The waste is contained, there's no bad smells, there's no pest issues, there's nothing, that no one's showing anything other than this fear that there's going to be a nuisance. So if I look at the permitting uses in the selling, a church, a daycare, things like that, say, why, why do we, I, if I were, I'm not turning, but if I were his attorney, I said, don't agree to any, any this artificial limitation, you guys try to control the nuisance, but where's the, my question is, where's the nuisance?
And what you say is monthly, take the beat.
Hundred and ninety-five would be the number.
What time? If you get five weeks, you get two hundred and twenty-five.
No, what I did was, what I did was four, he said forty-five, I timed it by fifty-two weeks, then divided it by twelve, so that you could get to the, you could get to the monthly reporting number that he could have, that we could get to reconcile the numbers with the USDA.
USDA, right. Because the only reason I hate to put him down to forty-five, if he get, he not, you're not going to do a calf, not when you got eleven, forty-five, you're going to do the full grown beef, steer, calves, whatever, but I mean, a lot of people want calf, stuff like that, calf, but.
Well, I.
I think give him a sixty limit on beef, no limit on, on the other animals. Oh, that puts him in doing, he could, he could sit fifteen to twenty-five a day on goats and land, talking about. But he also knows his capacity, and if USDA's package is right there, he's got to comply with your face. Cause you might have some small cattle come in there, you know, but I'd say sixty, sixty beef a week and no limit on, on the others.
Good? All right, uh, any other questions, Mr. Eggloss? Any other questions for us? All right, this time I'll entertain the motion, I don't mind coming out here. Got a motion to go about in public hearing, you have a second. Second, you have a second, Commissioner Alden, Alden paper? Commissioner Mudding?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're back at the regular meeting. Let's pleasure the board on the application for Eggloss.
I would make a motion if we approved sixty cattle a week, no restriction on any other type of animals, and, uh, signage, uh, reflective, I assigned over here in four by ten, four by eight, uh, four by eight, excuse me, all right, and I would like also remove number ten, limit the number of trucks, and like the, I'd like to change number fourteen where that holding pen is not considered part of his operating building, and like, do away with number fifteen where he's not having to report to Kelsey all the time, she's got enough work to do that and keep up with all this. Otherwise, I agree to everything you asked for.
Before I hit a second on that, I do have a question for Christian. The applicant has made an application for these changes, um, are we within our rights to change other conditions that he has not requested?
Well, I think that you are perfectly within your rights to impose different conditions other than what on, what are on the application. Um, I think it's up to the chairman to consider whether or not to vote up or down the existing application as it stands, and then maybe move into tweaking or changing those conditions to something else. But again, that's your call.
Okay, I mean, because what Commissioner Ambrose's, is, is motion is well outside of the things that were specifically requested. Taking away the square footage, I mean, that was not part of the, no, technically square footage, technically, he's still got eight thousand square footage, but that building out there, the house man, when we did this back in eighteen, I was not in my mind counting that holding pen to be part of his building. But he was, and so, I mean, it's just. Officially, I wasn't. Now, there is. Uh, I appreciate that, I, I know what you're saying, and, um, anyway, what I'm trying to get to is, we've got an application for these three points to be changed, and we've talked with the applicant about some, some actual numbers to quantify, qualify those requests to be changed, and I've got a motion that goes out, above and beyond, and so, I, you know, I want to, I want to see if we're, again, within our rights to do so.
I think you are, um, now whether that's how the chair wants to proceed, or will decide that it might be out of order because it addresses issues that aren't currently before the board, I think that's your prerogative, but because this isn't just a simple rezoning, you know, from one plastic cage to another, it's a rezoning involving conditions that already exist, I, I think you have a wide discretion to, you know, add or remove conditions as the board sees fit, you know, assuming they're reasonable.
Make your motion again, Mr. Ambrose, uh, make sure we're clear on each.
I'd like to make a motion we approve sixty head of cattle a week, no limitations on any of the other animals he does. I'd like to, uh, limit the signage to a four by eight reflective sign. I'd like to do away with the time that the trucks can deliver, or the farmers can deliver with trailers, and I'd like to do away with the restriction of ten trailers a day. You've got to sense of putting that on there, and also, I'd like to take away number fourteen, the restriction, that eight thousand square feet, I'd like to leave that in there. That should apply to his retail, it is a cleaning operation, not storage of cattle. And number fifteen, do away with the reporting weekly or monthly, Kelsey, she's got enough to do already. And number four, do away with that, later date, if you want to do retail sales, that's up to him, he'd have to come back to report and get his own for that. As long as that number four is in there, he can do it.
One other quick question for our attorney, Christian, you're earning your money. He makes the motion to do, to, based on this application, and it fails, then, then we're done?
No, I don't believe it, I, I think you still can consider some alternative motion.
All right, that's your motion, Commissioner Ambrose, is there a second? Your word, K.
Todd, you're on it. If you took some of those, those last ones off, I, I, I think you're trying to get too much business done in one shot, in my opinion.
Take which ones off?
I think we need to do, like our attorney that we're paying for, has devised this to do, which is to separate the, the two out, and do, do the one motion based on what was applied for, and then if we want to discuss further to go into that, but it just, it got to be such a long motion and so many items that, that I can't even tell you which ones I'm not, I'm not good with.
It'd be easier if they do with all the restrictions.
All right, so you've got a motion denied for lack of a second. All right, I'll entertain another motion. Commissioner Mudding, you're rolling, Mr. Davis. I'll make a motion. I got this. I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the application, uh, with the sign being a four by eight, maximum of four by eight reflective sign. That we move to a two hundred total head a month, and then the delivery times can be during their hours of operation, seven to three thirty P.M. Monday through Friday. Monday through Friday, Monday through Friday, it's not a twenty seconds. That's my motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second, Commissioner Mottin. All right, we're in discussion. Is that for just cattle, or is that for every, all of, everything?
Y'all restricting a man making a living.
Restricting himself to thirty a week, I mean, it's.
But he did say cattle. He said he'd love to have the other to do the beef, I mean, the sheep and other stuff.
When did he say cattle?
He said, he told us, he's not gonna have a thirty head of cattle and do a sheep, take away one of the thirty, because he could do the thirty head of cattle and take up his cooler, because they require the cooling, but the little animals don't. He can do another fifteen a day on that if he wants to. It's a good plan, bringing taxes in our county, you have good jobs.
Where we're going from, what we agreed to, and what we've chosen for three, two. The processing of beef shall be limited to thirty head per week, the processing of goats, lambs, and sheep shall also be allowed, as long as the total number of livestock processed does not exceed thirty head per week. Two years ago, that's what we agreed to, right?
Correct.
After we pushed him on all that too.
That's what we agreed to.
And what he agreed to.
And we've seen a year of operations, he's done a good jobs, clean, everything out there's put good jobs in county. Why not do him sixty head of cattle a week? Is he can only do so many, but if he gets smaller cattle, he can do more in there, and don't put a limit on these sheep or goats. I mean, what are you, what are we trying to do? Limit what we can have here in Monroe County, what kind of jobs are available, what kind of industries? I've been out there a couple times, people up in these other counties bring cattle, they pick it up, process meat, and I talk to the people, and they're really glad we have this town, because they have a place to take to, George sending out state like Mr. Vaughn sends it, and that gets expensive. And we need the jobs and locations. Ernest Thomas normally does cattle, now he's, he's got authorized backdrops, he's limited what he's doing, and we need this. I can go along with everything he said, he just raised the cattle and not put restriction on sheep or goats, counting towards his total.
Hold on a second, you said sixty a week of cattle, okay, hold on. Thirty-one hundred and twenty.
The full size steers, you gonna do, you know, thirty, thirty, forty a week?
But you could ask, I'll, I'll accept the friendly amendment to go to two hundred and sixty total animals. What I did was I took your sixty of cattle, you can't do that many in a week anyway, you can only do, what'd you say, thirty-five is really about the most you can do in, in beef. Take your number of sixty, times it by fifty-two, that's thirty-one hundred and twenty, and then you divide that by twelve, it takes another two hundred and sixty. That gives us a number which puts, which alleviates some of the fears, or some of the concerns, and some of our constituents, and at the same time, doesn't, doesn't totally restrict him like I do agree that those initial numbers did. And what you got is a number, at, at two hundred and sixty total animals a month, I mean, how, how would you feel about that? Actually, real fast, we're in the middle of a motion, I shouldn't be asking you, but I think, we've got a lower number from you, so don't, I think I answered my question. Go ahead.
I don't agree with that, because not everybody wants their animals hunted fourteen days. If he didn't have to hang them fourteen days, he could take a lot more.
Well, I said a friendly amendment, I looked at you, George was actually the one that made the second on the motions, and so, George, would you accept a friendly amendment to two hundred and sixty animals a week maximum?
That's including all types.
That's all, that's all types. I'm not, trying to keep up with the reports of how many can of cattle he did, how many, if you just do totals, it's much easier to. Is George there? George, are you still with us?
Hey, I'm, I'm sorry, can you repeat the motion or repeat what the question was?
I'm asking if you would agree to a friendly amendment to the motion to two hundred and sixty animals total per month.
I, I'd like to get a head nod for Mr. Eglow, if he feels like he can make the business work with that. I mean, I, I feel like it's more than twice what he, what he asked us for a couple years ago, but.
He's nodded, he did.
Then in that case, I think that's a sensible, rational, you know, change, so just my thoughts.
Two sixty a month, four by eight maximum reflective sign, the delivery during their hours of operation. That's the motion. I've got a second on that. Any other discussion?
Yeah, real quick, I, I just feel like I've got to say this. I'm happy with the, the things that I've heard, the four by eight signs, the seven to three thirty, still a little concerned about the total capacity, but I did want to say this, I sat here with a group of people a lot larger than this right here, most of which were against this, and I did make a lot of effort and a lot of work with the people that live there, to try to come up with some conditions that they would be satisfied with, and I committed to them at that, on that night two years ago, and I'm just not going to change my commitment. Now, I'm typical death with, with, you know, what you're doing, and I, I thought then, and I'm now, some, certain, but I am also committed to, to the people that, that I worked this through with, and, and said, "This is what we're going to do." I understand things change, I, I've, I've got these two motions, but I've, I've got to be fair to those people. I just wanted to.
All right. Commissioner Mottin, any other thoughts or questions? Any further discussion? Here and done, I'll call the question. All in favor, signify by raising your hand, or by saying aye. That's myself.
Aye.
And George. Anybody else? Okay? And all opposed?
Well, my, my thought was, we know he got a limit on, so why are we going over the limit? If he can't do two sixty a month, why are we putting it at two sixty?
He can do a total of two sixty, he can do calf, he can do lamb and sheep. He can't handle more than about thirty-five, maybe forty cattle a, a week anyway, that's why I.
I don't agree with that two sixty number. Okay, I feel it's too high. Going from thirty to two sixty, to me, that's a.
Well, no, 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 you're not going, you're going from a hundred and thirty-two.
No, thirty a week.
Like, two hundred and sixty a month.
But that was, was one ninety-five a month, which came up, that number? See, that, that's, that's two drafts of a change, but you, but you gotta remember though, he was not allowed doing any goats or sheep, that's the restriction.
He was allowed, he chose not to. Who's gonna give up a thousand dollar clean job for twenty dollar? But it died for lack of vote.
Well, no, that died for lack of vote, we, I still have gotten, I've got two fours, I got two against, and so, Lamarcus is now, well, I mean, I wanted to make sure he's clear, because he held off, so are you, a four against?
I'm giving.
So, I mean, motion, the motion fails. All right, is that it? Looking at my.
We can go make another motion, can't we?
Yes. What was, what was the failing point, or the main issue, just so I have, on the same page?
Lamarcus wanted two sixty, Lamarcus said that two sixty was too high to go to a month.
Okay.
How about, Lamarcus, how do you feel if we put like the sixty head a week on a calf, no restriction on the sheep and goats?
That's more than. That's more than two sixty.
We're worried about the total.
That's what, I'm focusing on total, that's what I'm saying.
You have not seen the operation?
I have.
You can eat off the floor, you don't have any smell, no nothing. I looked at water, I got my place, Ernest Thomas in my place, nothing compared to this, and the jobs he's bringing in, the money bringing for a candidate, I don't see why we're restricting so bad. I'd like to make a motion we approve what he wanted tonight, and increase the amount of animals to sixty feet, no restriction on sheep and calf, I mean, no restriction on sheep and goats.
I think you made a similar motion, and the other motion had to.
We got, we got a lot more.
But the limit, look, but here's the deal, the, the number of animals is the issue, is the crux here. You want unlimited.
Not unlimited.
George says sixty B.
Unlimited on the other.
You said sixty beef a week, that's more than he can do, so it might as well be unlimited on that.
It's not for, question, Eglow. Ask your question. Do anybody ever request their beef be processed, they pick up as soon as they're processed, not hunted?
Very seldom, but has, there, there hasn't been one fresh.
If you had it done like that, would that increase the amount that you could process that week?
We could.
I understand. No more questions.
Can I?
Well. You can ask questions, Eglow.
The, the size of the animal on, and I guess, yes, our facility, the way it's designed, can do about forty head or so of beef. However, a sheep, beef takes up this much ring, a sheep, you know, goat take up this much ring. The time it takes for these guys to process a goat is fifteen minutes versus an hour for a beef. And when you say the number of head, when it doesn't distinguish, that's, that's what limits the goat, that's what knocks out the goat, the sheep farm.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I want you to do something for us. We're sitting up here second guessing how you can run your business. And bouncing back and forth. Would you tell this board what you would like to see in how many, and per month? Per month, because that's the only thing she can check. How many head of beef? How many head of other animals, or you can total it up together, or whatever, give us, give us something that, that your business would be satisfied with, and let us decide yes or no on that, instead of us trying to figure it out. And we ain't done some business.
I would be content with the two hundred and sixty head that y'all were saying of everything, or if you wanted to divide that out to be two hundred head of cattle and sixty head of small room units, or however you wanna word it.
You word it.
Say something.
Yeah, word it.
You word it. You know, I, I mean, I've got farmers asking me, you know, I've got people that wanna work, I've got payroll to make. We have not been a nuisance. We have, we have, and I understand the first go around, we were unknown, but, you know, there's not, there's not a bloody pond, there's not bothers circling trash cans and all these things.
I, I know, just, just, and I wanna get down to it, give us.
I feel, I feel like if I can do two hundred and sixty head of animals per month, I can still not, I would not be over capacity, would not need to change the size of my building, which I'm not asking, and I could better serve my farmers.
John, will you live with that? No. That's it, that's what, so that was the original motion that I made.
Well, no, you had some other stuff in there.
Well, I think of course, I had to sign in the time of delivery, which is what he also asked about, was part of the application, I'm just quantifying.
And the reason I voted against it, because you didn't have some other things like, where you take this out of Kelsey's hands?
I'm not taking any of that out. I'm only addressing those three points, which is what he applied.
But I voted no, because you didn't have that in there.
Mr. Darnold, did you have? Go ahead.
Did you have anything, like, about?
That I don't.
You talking?
I'm not saying it's me.
I'm sorry, I guess.
I guess it's that I don't envy being an elected commissioner. No, I, y'all have a tough choice, it's, it's bailed at two sixty, you know, I, you've hurt our concerns without giving a number, I mean, I, maybe something more miserable with the motion that, that the chairman made earlier.
Mine was two hundred initially, then we did a friendly amendment to go to two sixty, and the, and the signs and the delivery times were already, were all, are always gonna, I think are gonna be the same. Yes, yes, ma'am.
I just, I just wanted to say, I appreciate you, Mr. Ambrose, for the report portion. I don't mind getting the reports, they're a pain, sure, but it's the state, what are you gonna do? I don't mind getting them, I do believe that if the number is higher, the hours are extended, and I mean that in the best way possible for everybody, I won't have the trouble that I'm having at this moment. So, I don't mind getting the reports, I really don't, if that helps.
Can I ask why, why John did not, John, John, what was your reason for not approving that motion?
Because he didn't do away with restriction of number ten, the number of trucks allowed in there a day is ten, that should be taken away.
It's not, it's not ten, it's ten at one time.
Right, but he said he didn't, but he said there wasn't even gonna be an increase in the number of trucks.
It's ten, it's ten a day, not ten at a time.
Where's that at? Which one is it?
Number, number ten.
No.
You are right.
He does not have that in there.
Four to five.
He said four to five a day, if we double what we, what we, if we go to two sixty, we double it, that's.
It's the ten.
I just know, if the man is not even asking for it himself, why are we volunteering additional stipulations? Let's, let's just vote on this. How much can we pay in terms of assets, for God's sake? Let's vote and be done with it.
Commissioner Mottin, I agree with you, I'm just, I'm trying to get to a consensus up here, and we're not doing it yet. Go ahead.
To, to the extent this helps at all, and I, I think that two hundred satisfies us, y'all went two hundred four by eight reflection on the sign, and let the hours be the current operations, then that addresses our concern. Two hundred total.
Chairman, I agree with that, too.
Why is it your business?
I mean, just so we're, just so we're clear, you saw, we talked about. Just, you talked about, when we started talking earlier, we did the numbers, got to a hundred and ninety-five, and that was, that was a number I got from you.
And how?
Hold on, he's not going under two sixty.
Correct.
He'll go to two hundred. My, my initial motion was two hundred, and George seconded it, and Eddie's not changing because he, he feels like he made a pro, he made a promise to his constituents. I've got consensus at two hundred, four by eight with the reflector, and, and the deliveries from seven to three thirty. I'm gonna make that a motion, and we'll go back to my original motion, two hundred.
I'll second.
Four by eight reflectors, seven to three thirty delivery time. Second from Commissioner Mottin, I'll call the question. All in favor? I got one.
Aye.
Two.
Aye.
Three. Any opposed? The application passes with those qualifications, y'all make note of that, and get to work. Thank y'all. Eddie, voted against. All right, we'll let, two minutes, yeah, we'll take a two-minute recess.
All right, down with it, if you go later.
Hey, Jim.
Second public, planning is open for me, public hearing. You got a motion, you got a second? Motion was Commissioner Ambrose, second, Commissioner Davis, all in favor? All right, we're in the public hearing. One, just a quick side note, two, Commissioner Mottin just signed off, because W just, I think somebody should be a little less.
Okay.
All right, all right, go ahead, Mrs. Porter.
Application number two is for P Ridge Road, conditional use variance, two eighty-six P Ridge Road, map one oh one, parcel zero zero one B. The property owner is Irons Shelton, and our applicant, Mr. Christie Bass here. The total acreage of the lot itself is twelve, but they will be using slightly less than an acre for this use. It is currently zone commercial, the request is a conditional use and a variance. Our objective is requesting to operate a machine and gear shop which falls under the conditional use of light assembly and fabrication in commercial. A variance request is for the lack of minimum setbacks on the property lines. Our rear minimum is seventy-five, the proposed is sixty. Our side minimum is seventy-five, proposed is forty-five on the side towards clock per road. And our side setback's seventy-five, and the opposite side is a proposed, proposal of forty. And there again, I'd just like to say as a side note, should it be approved, only slightly less than an acre will be utilized, not the entire twelve point four one. The applicant has stated the site will be cleaned up, the existing building will be renovated, an office will be built inside the renovated structure. Tree buffers are...
You remember with the purple, purple thing, it's an additional, where the office is going to be?
Okay.
You know, that was a little arrow.
Okay. In my picture that, you'll see the office area is going to be an additional area, right? Okay. An office will be built inside additionally to the renovated structure. Tree buffers are going to be placed on the side property lines. Landscaping will take place in the front of the building. Mr. Bass gave me a sketch, and I just put it in Publisher so it looked easier to read. We've got tree buffers on both sides, our existing building that will be renovated, the new office over here, some landscaping, the gates, that's P Ridge Road down at the bottom. The yellow dot is a power pole, and some parking spaces. This is the picture of the location on the other side of P Ridge Road, I'm just looking towards it. I'm sure I'll be aware of that. For more information, the lot will be slightly less than an acre. This is allowed in commercial because the lot has current and active water supply. This is the aerial shot, and this is the area right here, where it'll be. Our recommendation for the planning and zoning board was to approve five to zero, and I had no opposition.
All right, thank you very much. So, I recognize, y'all, the, I don't know who Ernest Shelton is, I know Willie. So, anyway, good to have y'all here. First, y'all are here, I know y'all will speak for it. Is anybody here against it? Everybody's here against it.
I'm like, motion come out of here.
Okay. Got a motion to come out of, just looking at Ben real fast, we're okay on that.
Yes, that's fine. I mean, you need to get the applicant out to speak, but if they don't want to speak, if nobody opposes, then y'all can move on.
No one is opposed, you have the right to speak if you want to, but if you waive that right, we'll come out of the public hearing. Motion to move out of the public hearing, got a second, Commissioner Davis, all in favor? All right, we're back in the general meeting. What's the board's approval? Got a motion, I'll second. How about that? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you all for waiting, being patient, good luck with what you're doing.
Any questions, I'll be glad to answer. Have a good time, brothers.
As easy like as Sunday morning. All right, next item on the agenda, public hearing for the, for James Roush rezoning agricultural presidential. So, entertain a motion to go into the public hearing. Got one, John Ambrose, got a second, Commissioner Davis, all in favor? Back in the public hearing. The reporter.
Yes, application number three, Montpelier Road rezoning. Twenty-eight fifty-four, Montpelier Road, map sixty-seven, parcel twenty-five. Property owner is James Roush and Company, LLC, applicant as well. The acreage is three point three. It is zoned agricultural, and he's requesting to rezone it. The objective for this, the property owner is requesting to rezone the three point three acre lot to residential. Should approval be granted, this lot will be divided in half, the current structures will be demolished, and two new homes will be built. Residential has a one acre minimum per dwelling versus adds three acre minimum per dwelling. This procedure would make the lot conforming as it is non-conforming in its current state. This is one of the abandoned homes on there. It's a mobile home, and it's a, it's just abandoned, there's nobody there. There is another house on there. I just, it does have someone living in it, so I didn't feel comfortable taking pictures of it, but it is the second house that will be demolished. This picture right here shows Forty-One South, this is Montpelier. This is where the lot is. The only thing is, Q Public just has it incorrect. This dark line right above the pond is where the property line is, not through the pond. So, for more information, the lot would be split in approximately one point six acre tracts. The existing dwellings will have separate water meters, separate septic, separate dry glades. And if approved, two new homes will be built. The planning and zoning board's recommendation was to approve it five to zero. And as a zoning note for clarification, a topic was discussed of a new survey that has not been completed for this property at this time. It is in process, but everyone is a little backed up, and the applicant is on the waiting list. The question came about to hold off on approving it, so a survey was complete. And Mr. Vaughn stated that doing this isn't necessary, and here's why, Mr. Vaughn, if I may ask, please say. At this time, the question is to approve the rezoning or not. When the survey is complete, it will be brought back to my office for a signature. And at that time, if I see it does not need, need something else, like a variance, I will let our applicant know, and he is aware that if, if he has to request a variance, he will go through this process.
All right, we are in the hearing. Thank you for your presentation, Roush. Do you want to speak for, anything to say? Is there anybody here against? Okay, so up to you.
If you have any questions.
Any questions?
If you got any free questions.
Okay. I'll most, I'll second that. Got a motion to come out of the public hearing, got a second, Commissioner Ambrose, all in favor? All right, we're back in the general meeting. What's the board's approval?
Motion approved.
Motion approved, as, as applied by Commissioner Ambrose. Second, Commissioner Rollin. Any discussion? If none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Enjoy. All right.
What's your dad's name?
Wayne.
Wayne, huh? I have one screw in it or something.
Thanks, son.
All right, let's keep on rolling. entertain a motion to move into public hearing. Motion for, motion for Commissioner Ambrose, second, Commissioner Davis, all in favor? All right, we're back in the public hearing for application number four.
All right, so application number four, in my last, Charles Johnson Road is requesting a variance. One fifty-eight, Charles Johnson Road, map forty-five, parcel twenty-one. Property owner is Jolene Price, the applicant, Kimberly and Cooper Fraser, and I have Ms. Fraser right here. The acreage is two point zero one, zoned agricultural, and their request is for a variance. The property owner and applicant are requesting to place a second dwelling on the lot that had, that already has one dwelling. The three acre minimum per dwelling regulation constitutes this request. The second dwelling does not fit the mother-in-law suite criteria. The variance is also for the lack of road drainage for two dwellings. Minimum is a hundred and fifty feet for two homes, minimum's a three hundred feet. And the current total is roughly two hundred and thirty feet with a shortage of roughly seventy feet. This is the location on Charles Johnson Road. You can see, there's two driveways. This right here is where the new home would go. This right here is where an existing home would go. And the applicant would like their family to be closer to the parents. Parents are disabled, and this would be beneficial for them. The area actually has septic, electric, and water available. This is actually the place where a previous home was years ago, that no longer exists. The recommendation from the planning and zoning board was to approve five to zero, and I had no opposition.
All right. Like a motion come out of here. Well, hold on, real fast, no one's here to speak against. Ms. Fraser, you're here, if you would like to say anything for it, you're welcome to, but if no one here is against, then that's quite a lot. You don't?
I have one little question. The second driveway on the park? That's, that was originally the neighbor's, did that are driveway?
That's just Q Public, you don't necessarily have to use that because of the request of a variance. As from what I was looking at, when I went to your house, put aside, it looked like they were both on your property, or your mother's property.
All right. What's the board's approval? Come out of here. Motion? Second, come out of the public hearing, Ambrose and Commissioner Davis, all in favor? All right, we're out of the public hearing, general meeting.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, Commissioner Ambrose, you got a second? Commissioner Rollin, all right, any discussion on that? If you're done, I'll call the question. All in favor? Take care of yourselves. Come on.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, very good. All right. Next item on the agenda, under own business, the Macon Water Authority contract amendments.
About when Sleepover here sent through all that? Okay, this is my third kick in the can of Macon Water Authority amended contracts. Back on March the second, you approved amending. What was to be amended was receiving a twenty percent discount on purchase water for resale from Macon Water Authority for our new service area, resetting that contract area back to a fifty-year term, and contingent on Macon Water Authority agreeing to increasing our capacity up to five million gallons a day. The additional capacity, originally you paid two and a half million dollars for two and a half million gallons a day. They provided information to us over the last twenty-nine months, and did not believe that we needed additional capacity. This is our average daily consumption for the last twenty-nine months, using twenty-seven point four percent of our capacity. Currently, we're consuming six hundred and eighty-five thousand gallons per day, with the additional eight hundred and fifty customers in the Juveet area. We'll add approximately a hundred and forty-two thousand gallons per day, and the combined will put us at about thirty-three percent of our two and a half million gallons per day allowance. This is a map of the Macon Water Authority Service District. Now draw your attention to what appears to be a yellow line. The contract area for the Macon Water Authority does not go past that yellow line. The fifty-year contract is limited to everything below the, below the yellow line. At our last meeting, there were some concerns. Chairman Tapley, Commissioner Ambrose, and myself went down to visit with the Macon Water Authority. Last Thursday, we met with the chairmen Samuel F. Brown Senior, member Dwight Jones, and the executive director, President Tony Rojas. They confirmed that by amending the contract, we will not, they will not, increase the size of the Macon Water Authority Service District. Yellow line stays in place. Secondly, the Macon Water Authority is not concerned with Monroe County exceeding the two and a half million gallons a day capacity until it becomes very routine over several months, at which time we would want to enter into renegotiating would be appropriate. To wind this up, the next step would be to eliminate the motion that contained the contingency of increasing the daily capacity from two and a half million gallons a day to five million gallons, five million gallons per day. And still believe, have a discussion with the city of Forsyth regarding an intergovernmental agency agreement establishing limitation on their daily consumption. Mr. Chairman?
What Jim was going to say is the way forward, based on our meeting, is his suggestion is going to be to offer us to sign the amended contract, extending the contract term fifty years inside of that area, that yellow area, and then obtain a twenty percent discount on purchase water for resale, reservice area. What's the board's approval?
I like it, I'd like to make a motion we do that, and also consider it an intergovernmental agreement.
Got a motion, what we separate that, what we separate that out is the motion approved as presented.
I'm like going to submit as, approve as submitted.
Okay. Got a motion to go second? Second, Commissioner Rollin, we're in discussion, yeah, thoughts, what?
I do, my concern is, if we do have to go renegotiate, are they going to come back and want to raise it back to fifty years again? I don't like going back to that.
Don't like negotiating with a city like Forsyth.
No, I'm talking about if we go past that two and a half million, they say we will come back and renegotiate. Are they going to want to go back to fifty years again like they're doing now? Why can't we just stay at forty, forty-two years? That's a long time being in a contract.
Well, that's only for that one portion, we've got forty-two year on that. Because the biggest fear we've got is that sixteen hundred acres in the city of Forsyth. If they get a heavy water user, and they see, we've got one and two and a half million, they have no limit, but they can pull off ours. And Macon Water Authority assured us that if we did go to that two or three months straight, then they would, we would come back and talk about that.
And that's what I'm talking about. Every time we go to renegotiate them, are they going to want to take the contract? They're going to have that, you're going to have to go back to fifty years every time?
The reason they went fifty years was because they were offering a discount.
Or, is the discount significant enough to go back to fifty years? Are we saving anything, or are they all game?
Twenty percent is pretty solid.
Plus, they, they have to keep so much out there for Water Authority. They got set up for all. I know, but they got allocated so much, it cost them money to do it, to keep the peak period. If we don't get to peak period, they still got those lights costing money. We're only using this down here. They lose some money.
It's actually similar to power generation, and doesn't, doesn't interfere, and that was an example they made, which I understood, is that even though, it's not always the peak usage, they have to be ready for it, and have to, they have to reserve that capacity for us. I think in any renegotiations, the renegotiations would be for what the price per thousand would be, and the initial cost for whatever increase. Because if we went with this, if we went and said we want the five million gallons a day, they could have asked for another two and a half million dollars upfront to, and they're not doing that, and they're not going to pivot. They said that, look, you end up going over two and a half million gallons in a day. We're not out there checking the meter, we're not going to, we're not going to be penalizing y'all. It's only if you've got two or three months, that's the number, if y'all remember, two or three months above two and a half million gallons a day, only then would they want to come back and renegotiate. They're not going to cut us off in the meanwhile.
I'm not, I'm just concerned about they want to bump it back to the original fifty years. That's all the thing I'm concerned about. I mean, I understand. We keep taking it back.
But, but that's, but that's in the future. I mean, your, your concern is down, point is taken. But for right now, I don't think it's out of line.
We could tip it to forty-two years, though, but then we wouldn't get to twenty percent discount. And you can figure out if we've got eight hundred and fifty homes.
Oh, the twenty percent discount's worth that.
That's a trade-off. Because they got their infrastructure down, they got to keep their, their peak period up.
Yeah, I, I think that's a fair deal. That twenty percent discount's going to get a whole lot bigger because there's going to be a whole lot more development in that area. I think that the key thing is what you guys said, is let's look at that period of my career, that's Forsyth, that's, that's the key thing.
And so, then we can immediately discuss that if y'all want, but right now, I've got a motion and a second to approve as presented. I'm going to call the question. All in favor? And if you're opposed to something, if you're opposed, probably, okay, so it passes three to one. Commissioner Davis opposed to the, and I understand your concern. We'll talk about it. We can discuss real quickly, and, and tell you what, why don't we do it this way? I think a discussion about that might be something that we talk about during the retreat. So, we could move into commissioners' comments, and we've got two down here for retreat, consolidation for remarkers. Why don't we move into that, and we can discuss this, this intergovernmental agreement as part of that. agreement as part of that larger discussion. So, go ahead, LaMarcus, you have a call?
So, about the retreat, right now it's getting for June twenty-fifth at Monroe County Conference Center, top two chamber, they're going to be hosting, they're going to send the invitation out to all the entity, entity, uh, Jim?
Just, just general discussion?
Yeah.
What purpose is the Chamber of Commerce going to have in this, in this retreat? I, I, I can send out invitations.
Okay, well, we're special.
They do.
Well, I was thinking about a mutual party between us and all the other entities.
We had that for about two years, and it was a total failure.
I don't agree with that.
I didn't accomplish anything.
Just so we're clear, let's talk about the retreat. Something they do in Lawrence County is a community vision retreat. It's not just the county and, and city, the county, city, city of Columbine in this case, Board of Education, Development Authority, it'll be like our One Monroe meeting that we've had. The only reason we stopped the One Monroe meetings was because COVID, it wasn't, I mean, we were, we were having good, good conversations, we had some good.
Good work, accomplishment.
I don't know, Ford Road's a pretty good, a pretty good accomplishment, where we worked together on, on something. You know, not all of us are at war with the city, you know, we're, we're, I like open discussion, it's not going to hurt for people to get together and talk about a vision. We're leaders of the whole county, the city of, the city council, of the leaders of their, of their respective government and constituents here in the city, who are also Monroe County, Development Authority, Board of Education, all of those, we all need to come together and talk about what our visions are, so that we're not butting heads all the time. What's my phrase? Any matter, people are down on what they're not up on, we know if we, if, we might be attacking the same problem and not even knowing it. We, we work together on the, on the other debt.
And then they slide that annexation through us.
I mean, we're not losing anything with that. I mean, but, but here's the thing, we can get off on that discussion. What Marcus has brought up is whether or not, is a retreat. He's wanting to plan it, you sent me an invitation to come sit and talk about a vision from Monroe County, I'm going to show up. I'm going to be there to, to discuss it, to represent the folks I represent. And so, you know, it looks like you've already got a plan, it's not going to be an agenda item, I mean, I talked about an intergovernmental agreement. As I understand it, I even said it to the mayor, I said, well, what's our agenda? He said, well, we actually would have facilitator to talk about what our visions are, but not, it's not a nuts and bolts meeting, it's a much more thirty thousand foot view, kind of like what we did at our commission retreat, but we extrapolated that out, expanded out to all the other entities. So, I mean, you're letting us know that you've been working on that, you've come up with a date and a time, and everybody else is amenable to it, it sounds like it is to me. Again, if you send me an invitation, I'm, I'm going to be there, so.
But, the reason why I want the chamber in, because it would be, it won't be been like, it's coming from the county, you've got some ritual parties sending out all the invitations, and we'll come in instead of saying, well, it's a county meeting or a city meeting, we've got somebody in the middle in between.
But I assume Forsyth's got their own Chamber of Commerce, too.
I think Forsyth Memorial County. They got, they've been, been, well, city bigs.
Main Street.
Main Street, yeah.
They're down, they're down for the authority.
But they'll be invited, too. That's, and, and that's, that's exactly what I want, you know, what's our vision? I mean, what's our plan as a whole for the growth that's coming to Monroe County, Forsyth Memorial County? I just don't want to get caught from the blind side, and all of us, like you said, attacking the same thing we've been doing together.
I guess I just get upset, because we can't have a vision when the city's got sixteen hundred acres, that they're going to stick it down a throat.
Well, I see about this, the city is not an island, and they can't, they can't function without us, and I don't think us as a county should ostracize and make them an island. I'm not so much committed or, or interested in the whoever's on council or whoever's the mayor, but I have citizens in the city and in the county, and, and I want to, I want to do what I can to help them, and if I had to work with the city to help those citizens, then that's what I'm going to do.
Because that's part of my vision, too, is the city, majority of my vision is the city.
So, all of the city, you're my district.
Well, the city's my district, but their, their Monroe County citizens, I do, I can't help them. I just know that those One Monroe things we had, just didn't seem to accomplish anything.
But this plan is, I'll get with Jim, I mean, Jim will hash out some things about it, but June twenty-fifth at the conference center, that is pretty much the thing.
Next item we want to discuss.
Well, consolidation, I've been, I'm, Commissioner Rollins, he brought it up, you know, about maybe looking at consolidation, so I, I took it myself, started looking into it, and I looked at New York City, Columbine, Muscudi County, they were operating great, and I've just been doing some research on it, and I just want to look, look at some things that maybe we can do, you know? Like Greg said, people are down on what they're not up on, maybe we can consolidate some stuff.
Can I clue you in on something you're down on, not up on?
What's that?
In two thousand fifteen, this was brought up, and the City of Forsyth made a resolution that in no way in the future would they ever discuss consolidation in County Monroe County. That, that confirmed, they've got that on record.
So, the easy way, easy way forward here is, that could be one of the things, you could bring it up, get a, get a straw.
Treaty City Council at, at.
Yes, so, well, that's why we'll bring it up, and if they want to talk about it, we can, not.
And, and if they don't, keep in mind, when you bring things, Jim, how many times have we talked about it? Pick another rock, look at another, and sometimes we just have to lay that, that rock back down. But, but a lot of times, there are things there that we find that we can agree on, and portions of, of, I mean, departments may be a good idea, just, just one or two, or something good might come out of it, so I'm, I'm willing, I'm, I'm supposed to look at things that will save us money and, and help our citizens.
That's my whole thing. What, what's, what's best for the citizens of Forsyth Memorial County, not just?
But I, we certainly can't consolidate the city.
Don't want to discuss it.
So, it's easy enough, but I've had a lot of my citizens ask me, why don't we do it? So, if, if my answer is, well, we're shut early in the city, so, so we don't need to discuss that.
Yeah, if you don't have a city, the city does not want to talk about it.
All right, comments?
I've got, do you have a question?
Oh, well, that, that, I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to say, but I, what I put before everybody here is an example, I've checked about eight or ten of these Second Amendment laws and ordinance they put out, and I like, the best one I like is Haverchamp County, I put one on Ben, your desk, I put one on Jim's, this is Haverchamp County's, and if you look at the last two pages, I would like to, this is what I'd like to oppose, is with the, with the Congress that we have now, I'm afraid they're going to come out and come out some kind of crazy ruling that requires picking up fifteen round AR-15s, and our friends, our brothers, or the policemen and law enforcement here at Monroe County, and if this happens, there's going to be trouble, and I don't want to see our officers get hurt in any way. With this Second Amendment ordinance, we could have it here, then the federal people have to be the ones coming out and doing it. Anything violates the Second Amendment, but now, and where this one says, if you just put in Monroe County, place a Haverchamp County, I would like to present this and have this, let them take a look at it, if it's feasible, then we come back and have the hearings on this, put this in place. More states are doing statewide and countywide, all of the United States right now. Ben, if you take a look at it, bring us back up, I put one on your desk.
Yes, sir, I, I've got it, I've read the Haverchamp Board's report before, if I'm not mistaken, the board considered this or passed a resolution similar to this.
Oh, sir, we passed, Larry Evans passed a resolution, he didn't agree to do this, that he just wanted us to put a proposal out, that we.
Also supports the adoption of this resolution. Would you find that what our share?
I talked to him about two years ago, he's all for it. That's why he couldn't understand why we didn't put it in the vote, he said it just saying we were respective. These are our buddies, our friends, our employees, our brothers, sisters here in Monroe County, and when they go to enforce some unconstitutional law, and they force our deputies to go out and take these guns away, people, they're going to be troubled, somebody's going to get hurt. I'd say let the federal people get hurt, not our people.
I just, I just seem to think it's, I don't know.
Let y'all, there's states and counties that are doing this now.
I don't argue with the concept, I just wonder if our sheriff can, I don't know, Ben, have you looked at it, I mean, I can't ask you to speak to the sheriff, but.
No, sir, I can't speak for the sheriff, but I have looked at this before, and, for this jurisdiction and other jurisdictions, and, and I don't remember the exact language that gave me cause for concern, but the overarching concept that I was concerned about is that this board doesn't decide what laws are constitutional and not constitutional. The Superior Court, federal courts, appellate courts decide that. And my concern was that when a law is in place, that's the law until a court decides otherwise. And the, my concern with the board commissioners instructing a constitutional officer not to follow a law that's lawfully passed until a court sets it unlawful, was my concern with this resolution and vision. That's why I prepared the other version of the resolution. Because I don't think we have, I, I understand the concept, and I understand the concern, and that's not my job to arbitrate, because it's in my chair, but I don't think this board has the power to say what laws are constitutional, what aren't, that's the, that's the Superior Court, well, Superior Federal or appellate court, not let them get into a specific court. I can review it again, but that was my concern with the Haverchamp County ordinance initially, or resolutions are.
And I'll talk to the sheriff, I just, I just want to be clear on it.
All right. Good?
That's all I got.
Any other, well, any other commissioner of counties? Any other public companies?
Got a motion, we're going to the executive session.
Got a motion, go into the executive session, I have a second, Commissioner Davis, all in favor? All right, all the cameras need to stop.